Good afternoon and welcome to today's Board of Commissioners Agenda Work Session. It's November 18th, 2021, and we are resuming a series of budget hearings to address our upcoming fiscal year budget. We have two agencies that will be providing a presentation, and the first one is our Support Services Agency. So Director, you're welcome to join us.
Can you start over? All right. County Attorney Office, Sharon Stanley, Support Services Agency. On behalf of the Support Services Agency Departments, I would like to thank you for this opportunity today to present to you our fiscal year '23-'24 budget request. Can we get the book? Yeah, sorry. And we'll be handing those out so you can look at them while you're up there. We know that the budget decisions you will be making in the upcoming year are not easy, and we appreciate you taking the time to listen to our input. The Support Services Agency, true to our name, supports every elected office and department in the county, whether enabling citizens to complete transactions remotely, keeping public safety vehicles on the road, enabling courts to conduct business during COVID, opening a new morgue, facilitating purchases of over $180 million annually, opening a new voting facility before the 2002 elections, valuing over $43 billion of taxable property for the county, or enabling the technology, and I need a little clicker, sorry. All right. This is up, upper sideways. Okay. Or enabling the technology for a 911 call, as seen on this slide. I would hazard a guess that Support Services Departments collaborating with other agencies touch every citizen and business-facing service or process in the county. The budget requests the Department heads will be bringing to you allow us to maintain, improve, or in some cases, expand these services and processes. Our first department presenting this morning will be Property Management, and with that, I'll ask Scott Barfield, the Property Management Director, to come up to the podium.
All right. Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and Deputy County Manager. I hope not to take too long with this, and I hope it makes a lot of sense as I go through it. So before we look at the '23-'24 budget numbers, let's first look at some of our challenges, some of the things we're facing in the department. So in our first picture here, we've got a picture of here of Martine Mays. He is now one of four employees that has left the department in the last four months to go make more money. Martine worked here three and a half years. I think he worked on your office up there, Chairwoman. So we have employees leaving us. Of course, our mission statement, and as our workload increases, it's getting harder to provide the overall intention of our mission statement. This picture here is of Priscilla Payton. Priscilla has worked for the county now for 32 years. She started her career off working at the Holiday Inn. She worked there 13 years, and before coming to work for the county, well, the reason she came to work for the county was to make more money, and for the benefits, and for the retirement. She still is working with the county. She's retired, she's still working part-time at Property Management. So we've got some tough ones here. So if you, our project workload and ongoing maintenance demand is pushing our staff to a new limit. We have 44 active renovation, new construction, and 30 capital maintenance projects underway. So how are we getting this work done? If you look at our overtime since 2017, in 2017, we spent $49,000. In '18, we spent $196,000 in overtime. '19, we spent $191,000. 2020, we spent $195,000 in overtime. And this year, we spent right at $147,000 in overtime. Now, that's what we've, that's what we've paid our hourly employees. It doesn't reflect, include, the managers, which do not get paid overtime and are working 50-plus hours a week. Over the last couple of years with the overtime, we have employees, their employees, that are at the end of the year are making more than the managers are. And that's obviously the money we're paying out in overtime. Our managers are having to come in after hours and put their tools on to get the job done. This picture here is of Lee Vaughn. He's our manager over new construction and renovation. Lee has worked as many as 37 straight days. That's coming in and putting his tools on after hours in the weekends to get the jobs done. That job, and the job this picture here is of, is of the police training facility. That job was completed on time, and it was completed during the pandemic. Lee came in with the other employees, and he worked those extra hours, not just the 37 straight days, but to get that job done and to get it done on time. So with that, the continuous hours is not good, is not, is not healthy for our employees, and definitely not healthy for their marriages. So if we look at the next here, some of the non-compete salary ranges, it's what we believe. You can go back to the first couple of slides and talk about those again. So Priscilla started over the county and had regular yearly salary increases. We're not getting regularly yearly salary increases. That was the issue with Martine. He did not get, I think, but one raise while he was here. And of course, she had, didn't get the salary increases, and she, of course, she had the traditional retirement, and she's worked here again 32 years. Employees today are not seeing regular salary increases, and the retirement has changed. Both are making it harder to get employees like Martine to come to work at property and stay. Now, if we look at some of our automated tools, that we're talking about the office here, and that stuff we do lack, and so with the lack of the automated tools for tracking projects, the admin staff, of course, we're working with IAS to get a program put together or a, yeah, program put together. So we have files. So if you were to Public Safety Train us, look at it. There's a file for agendas, contracts, pictures, emails, and the financials. If you called over there today, and you said, "Scott, we'd like to see what y'all spent on police training. We want to see all the information." You just can't go to one area and get that. You're going to have to go get the agendas. You got to go get the pictures. You got to find the file. It's all stored in different places inside the L drive. And over the last 10 years, admin staff has managed to track to keep up with $181 million worth of work. Our last item here is, as far as capital maintenance, it's never been included in our budget. We've never had capital maintenance money included in our budget. And we don't know what we're going to get or receive until the, at the beginning of each year. So before I go to the next slide, of course, the next slide is one where we're going to talk about what we're actually asking for. So putting this budget together, it's sort of been like playing across the street. We've looked both ways, right? And then you get hit by a plane. So here's the plane. Property Management is requesting, is asking for a 92.94% budget increase. Now, if you look at the total number, it definitely doesn't compare to some of the other larger, large departments. But previously, we've never had personnel inside our budget. Over 10 years now, we have not received any new employees. So you can taxably take personnel that we've, we haven't had that in 10-plus years. Capital, we're asking for, of course, $7.3 million in capital, but we've never had capital in our budget before. We wait to the beginning of each year, and then we ask, we say, we need, this item, this piece of equipment is failing on us. So we'll go through each one, and we'll start off with the personnel first and what we're asking for. And the personnel, we're asking for 16 new positions, and of course, that's right at $1.1 million. And of course, we'll look at why we need the positions and where the positions will fit in. Any questions so far? Am I talking too fast?
Thank you, Scott. Of the hours of overtime and with managers working nonstop like Lee, do you have vacancies or that you're having trouble getting employees?
We do, and that will be later on. A couple of slides, you'll see where we're at on that. But yes, we're having a hard time keeping employees.
Okay. So how many new positions other than the vacancies, if they were filled today or next week?
Well, we're asking for 16, and we're, we're running right at 75 positions, and we have 95 positions in the department. So now, that's across the board. That's not just in managers. That's custodial and techs and others.
Okay. So you're a few short anyway, but you also need additional.
Need additional. Well, you want to cut back on that overtime.
Yeah.
We are adding new buildings, which we'll talk more about as we get, go further into the slides, but we're definitely getting more work. We've got more square footage as well to take care of. But we'll talk more about that on, inside here.
I'm glad I got gritters in the police precinct.
Well, now, Lee, of course, he is, he's going to be, yes, Lee's going to handle that job for you. All right. So we'll look at personnel first. Of course, we're asking for 16 new positions. And here's the org chart. Of course, the green is where the positions would fit inside the department. And as we move on, we'll talk a little bit about the positions we have here. So our next slide is the-
Scott, can you go back for a moment?
Yes, ma'am.
Finish looking at that. Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you need any more time? Are you good? Commissioner Richardson? Okay, you can continue.
Okay, our next slide. Our next slide is of the square footage versus the filled positions. And as we purchase new buildings, we expect our square footage to go up. In the last 10 years, our square footage has increased by 500,000 square feet, while our active number of employees is decreasing. The additional space would be like adding six new five-story buildings, like the one we're in right now, to our workload. And this is, of course, is where the maintenance demand is pushing our staff to a new limit. We keep, we average, or we have right now over 300 open work orders. Now, that's different from renovations and new construction, but that's like a light bulb out of door not working. And so our customers are calling in, and we're not getting there that day. We're not getting there that next day. We have 300-plus work orders that stay open continuously. And of course, that's across the county. We take care of 110 facilities. Now, understand when I'm talking about property, I'm not talking about parks, because parks is separate, and they take care of their own buildings. The fire department, they take care of their own standalone facilities, but we do manage their combination stations for them. So those work orders are hot and cold calls. There are light bulbs. There are doorknobs. The elevator's not working. I'm cold, I'm hot, right?
We don't know anything about those calls.
Well, when you say cold and hot, I don't have my phone on right now, so if one of y'all texts me and say you're hot or cold-
Yeah, I do that all the time.
I know it. I'm not going to get it.
We have a question.
So looking at these numbers, this looks like kind of the trajectory of the vacancies, right? From the 90, 95 to 75?
Right. So if you, yes, ma'am, if you go back to 12, you can see we had 95 employees, and right now, we only have 75 of those positions filled.
Okay. But it is good to note, there hasn't been a reduction in staff, just attrition.
No, ma'am. No.
Okay, thank you.
It's just a tough, a tough time. Some of the custodians, imagine custodians make $1,153 an hour to start. They start their day, and they come in this building, and they get all these bathrooms cleaned. They clean the toilets that every one of us come in and sit on, right?
Yes, come on.
And just to, just to follow up, is this concentrated in custodial, or is it spotty in terms of these, these vacancies?
Say that, I'm sorry.
The vacancies. What would, is there a trend in terms of which job role?
No, it's across the board.
Just across the board?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, and I appreciate you being forthright about it. You know, we've undertaken efforts for there to be a paying classification study. We are not proud of those wages that we see amongst employees who are working within among us. And, you know, we understand this could be part of it, but, you know, and it fall on different ears.
As we look at our next one, again, it's, it's going to be, the graph is of payments processed for our filled positions. Over the last 10 years, you can see that the workload has increased, and property management has completed right at $181 million of work. That's a lot of bills that have been paid, and that's a lot of work that's been done. While during the same time, we're steadily losing our key employees, that's, that's across the board, because that's custodians, that's maintenance tech, that's admin staff, and that's managers. When I talk about the last four months of four people that have left us, that, that has been two techs and two people inside the office that left, admin staff that has left us. Of course, the next slide here shows the positions and the salaries that come with them. And don't please know that this includes the fringe benefits, okay? As well. And we're looking at, again, $1.1 million.
Scott, can you talk to us about how the workload is shared amongst persons in your department versus third parties that may get work contracted out to them?
Sure. So say for the fire department, we have a project manager, and her name is Sarah Logue. So Sarah works with a contractor. So all the fire departments are built by a contractor. She is the project manager that oversees that. Now, if you look at parks and you look at DOT, they have a program manager in between the project manager in that. We do not have a program manager. And of course, on a lot, on a lot of jobs we have, we do save a few dollars, 5% to 8% per project by not having a program manager that's built in there. But so, but Sarah is a project manager, and she oversees all our fire departments that are being built. Now, if you move, I'm sorry. Did I miss something? So if you were to move, now move to Lee Vaughn, right? So when Lee did police training, that we are the contractor at that point. We do not have a, a general or GM, a GC that comes in, a general contractor that comes in that sees and oversees the work done for us. We are the GC. So in that case, Lee then hires all the subs, puts all the contracts together, buys all the material for them. There's a lot of money that's saved there. So Lee went from police training to police headquarters and was a GC there. Now, Lee is the GC, and he moved over to Elections Headquarters, and he's doing that facility. But he's also going to be doing, taking care of Precinct 6 for us. Now, in that case, though, he will, he won't be the general contractor. He'll be the project manager over it, and we'll have a general contractor that will do that job. So we have, in the department, we have three other project managers, and they do all small jobs for, I say small jobs. They're doing, right now, they're doing the, using the art money, and of course, they're building out the courtrooms. We don't have a GC in those courtrooms. We have project managers overseeing that job, and they get all the subs and get them in and out of the building, and purchase material as well, where we save money too. So-
Okay. In, in the event that you have lesser staff, you don't have adequate staff for a job, might you utilize a third party? Or is it, is work just scheduled based off of the employees and resources that you do that?
Off employees, right. Now, of course, we're going to save money, right? And we're going to get a little more done. So back to Sarah, when she does a fire station, and we get the price back from the general contractor, like we will for Stratton, I mean, for, I said Stratton, gritters, and for Precinct 6, we'll get the price back, and then we'll look at it, and we'll value out to make sure we get it down to within the budget number itself. Where on some of our jobs, like for fire stations, for the morgue, for Fleet, where we did a general contractor, we valued out the cabinet shop, and the cabinet shop actually builds the cabinets and some of the furniture for them. And we save money that way as well. But yes, if we did not have the employees, we're going to come back to the board, and we're going to say we need additional money, starting off with Mr. GC, of course, and Sharon.
Okay.
You've got a great bunch of employees that work at Property Management. So this is just the general that we got right here. This is the general operating. That's not going up that much. That's something that we've always had. That's all, that's what we've always operated with, just the operating. No personnel, no capital money. Sure, we get some fund balance money at the beginning of the year, and throughout the year, we do get additional money. But we never have money to plan to do the work with. The next slide shows the breakdown of the operating. And back to the third parties, we do have annual contracts. I think we're very well-balanced at property, where we do, we're not overloaded with employees, that we do have contracted labor as well. And I think we have a very well-balanced, we're very well-balanced there. And of course, with the, in the operating, of course, with new buildings comes utilities. We add that as we go, so that number doesn't look that high right there, but that will be the upcoming, as far as filled, you know, new buildings we're building.
One more question for you in the previous.
Do I?
One more question for you. So I see public utility services twice with the same justification, but different numbers. So didn't know, and they're out of the same account or same code. Didn't know what the difference was.
Say that again, I'm sorry. Let's remember where, which slide?
So slide 13 and slide 14, there's public utility services 64, 6470. It's listed twice, and it has two different numbers. One of them has $68,419, and the other one has $146,885.
I'll, I'll get back to you with that.
Okay. Yeah, just want to know what the difference is.
One is '23, one is fiscal year '23, and one is fiscal year '24.
Thank you.
Okay, '23 and '24 is what that is.
Yes, thank you.
That's Ms. Arnold that keeps me good and straight here. And of course, our last one here is the capital, something we've never had in the budget. And we're asking for $7.3 million for that, which is going to go down to 6.8. But if you were to take 6, 6.8 million and spread it across all the buildings we have, it'd give you right at $61,000 per building. That's not that much. Let's look at this building right here. This building right here needs a new roof. It's not leaking, but it is past its life. It needs a new cooling tower, which works hand in hand with the chiller, which cools the building, and it needs a new cooling tower. You take all the windows that are in the building right now, they are 50-plus years old. The seals are, are failing. If you were to go to Dr. McMorris' office, on certain times when it rains and the wind's blowing in the right direction, rain gets in her office on her ceiling from the windows above. Bill Vogtman's office, we struggle keeping water out of his, out of his wall. If you go to Pat Riley's office right now, you'll see some stained ceilings, bats from the seals. Of course, you're going to lose a lot of efficiency that way as well. But if you were to take all three of those items and put them together, you're probably looking at about, right around $2.5 million to get that work done. If we were to save capital dollars today, that's 6.8, we wouldn't do this building. There is a lot more out there that needs to be done. There's a lot more roofs, there's a lot more HVAC, and so it would, it would be put down the list, and it would be a while before we got to it. Now, sure, we could do it first, but if you were to put the stuff in order, it'd be a while before it got done.
So with the capital request or the budget request, how are we determining what all the needs are to get the buildings to a certain standard?
Okay, if you back, yeah, we'll go back to the operating. We are asking for $1.5 million in professional services for a company to come in and do a, you know, assessment for us.
Thank you. We need that.
But if, as long as, a few of us have been in the department, and the work orders that come in, we've got a good run in a list of what should be done now to get called up.
Scott, we'll talk about how this relates with 3.5 billion, so we'll make sure we get on that.
Okay. So last year, y'all did approve $3.5 million in capital funds, but that was not given to property. That wasn't given to parks. That wasn't given to the sheriff. The county manager has that, and we will have to come to her, which we did, and y'all will approve tonight three roofs that we have requested be replaced, which is $1.6 million. It's coming out of that 3.5. Now, that allows parks to ask for money. That allows the sheriff to ask for money. I would take it all, but we don't need to. We need to share that.
And see, that's what, I'll tell you, this is not easy for me, and maybe for other commissioners, to grasp, because we have departments that have the capacity to do building and property management work, and then we see outside companies, and then we see what you do. I know we, and it may be a way of just sharing the load, and we have not budgeted this regularly, as you stated, to know how to really go about this strategically. But I just need help in understanding of what you're asking for us is going to get our buildings to a standard that's acceptable, whatever that metric is, you know, however you ascertain what that is. There's got to be some professional standard of what's a, you know, reasonable condition where you're not spending more overtime because you're not-
works hand in hand with the chiller, which cools the building, and it needs a new cooling tower. You take all the windows that are in the building right now, they are 50-plus years old. The seals are failing. If you were to go to Dr. McMorris's office, on certain times when it rains and the wind's blowing in the right direction, rain gets in her office on her ceiling from the windows above. Bill Vogtman's office, we struggle keeping water out of his, out of his wall. If you go to Pat Riley's office right now, you'll see some stained ceilings, bats from the seals. Of course, you're going to lose a lot of efficiency that way as well. But if you were to take all three of those items and put them together, you're probably looking at about, right around 2.5 million dollars to get that work done. If we were to save capital dollars today, that's 6.8, we wouldn't do this building. There is a lot more out there that needs to be done. There's a lot more roofs, there's a lot more HVAC. And so it would, it would be put down the list and it would be a while before we got to it. Now, sure, we could do it first, but if you were to put the stuff in order, it'd be a while before it got done.
So with the capital request or the budget request, how are we determining what all the needs are to get the buildings to a certain standard?
Okay, if you back... Yeah, we'll go back to the operating. We are asking for 1.5 million dollars in professional services for a company to come in and do an assessment for us.
Thank you. We need that.
But if, as long as, a few of us have been into the department and the work orders that come in, we've got a good run in a list of what should be done now to get called up. Okay. So last year, y'all did approve 3.5 million dollars in capital funds, but that was not given to property. That wasn't given to parks. That wasn't given to the sheriff. The county manager has that and we will have to come to her, which we did. And y'all will approve tonight three roofs that we have requested be replaced, which is 1.6 million. It's coming out of that 3.5. Now, that allows parks to ask for money, that allows the sheriff to ask for money. I would take it all, but we don't need to. We need to share that.
And see, that's what, I'll tell you, this is not easy for me and maybe for other commissioners to grasp because we have departments that have the capacity to do building and property management work and then we see outside companies and then we see what you do. I know we, and it may be a way of just sharing the load and we have not budgeted this regularly, as you stated, to know how to really go about this strategically. But I just need help with understanding of what you're asking for us is going to get our buildings to a standard that's acceptable, whatever that metric is, you know, however you ascertain what that is. There's got to be some professional standard of what's a, you know, reasonable condition where you're not spending more over time because you're not doing the right things today. And I'm just trying to get to whether or not this...
And our annual, we have annual contracts. We have an annual contract where Max Air take care of our HVAC. That is a separate, that's separate from property, but they have a list of all the equipment they would love to see replaced. We have an annual contract with our elevator companies. They know the equipment better than anybody does because they do all the maintenance on it. They give us a list and they tell us what they would like to see done as well. We have the generators under a contract. All our generators are in the same...
Okay. So even on top of that, what I don't know is for the, that's helpful to know, but for all the buildings that are under you, is that all the buildings? Does, you know, do some of the other departments handle their own? Like, when do we ever get a sense of what's needed for everything?
And Scott's actually started running the project, but we don't have the dollars to do an external contractor. That facilities assessment you see up there, it actually, we'll be asking for some money in '22 from your end funding to start that. That gives you a facility condition index on every building that we do that on. And that's why his group has started. But they can't go out and do every building, then they wouldn't be able to do any of these projects. So we will be doing that and then his group will be managing that. And that'll include all buildings, not just property management buildings. So and that's a project that his group has already started doing, so.
Okay, so, okay, so let's say Parks has buildings that need work. Is that something that's going to fall under your budget or your portfolio? Are they managing a similar process for their own facilities?
No, ma'am. Everything I'm asking for is looking at what facilities. We take care of, which was right at 110 buildings.
110 buildings?
Yes, ma'am. Now, Parks, I think they push, they have some smaller ones, but I think they push 200-plus buildings.
Oh, okay. Is there any other department that manages their own property?
And that would be the fire department. So we manage, of course, the fire department's combination, police-fire. The fire department itself has 31-plus facilities that are standalone fire stations that they manage. And of course, the water department as well. And the sheriff at the jail does their own as well.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other questions before continuing? Do you have any more slides?
Well, one more.
You don't have to go. You can stay.
It's actually the, of course, that's, this would be the breakdown here. Two more slides. This is the breakdown of the capital request we're asking for, the 7.3. And then, of course, our last slide. We love that picture. I had something else I was going to say, but you know, we are near the holidays, so I'll just finish it up by saying Merry Christmas. And with that, you got any other questions?
Yeah.
Motorcycles. Who has a motorcycle in property management? For what? What are motorcycles? It says on page 16, autos, vans, trucks, motorcycles. I'm just trying to picture who's got a motorcycle other than Steph. Oh, okay.
I was thinking there's a motorcycle riding around doing work. Can you see that? A bunch of tools on the side?
Could serve a recruiting purpose.
Again, you have a great department and you've got some good employees that work at property. And they love what they do, but it is getting tough for the employees to work the overtime. When we first told them they were going to get overtime, they were ecstatic, right? But how in the world do you keep up $200,000 a year for four years with overtime?
Yeah.
It starts wearing on the employees. Then when you look at the managers and the guys that do not get the overtime and they're still putting that same time, they have to come in and manage the work. It's getting very tough on the guys. And we do work. It's a seven-day-a-week job here. We do get calls after hours. If you were to go to finance today, you'll see we're renovating that space, but we can't do the work until after hours on Saturdays and Sundays. So we have to come in, there's guys that come in and get those people in and out of the building. And of course, we do some of the work as well.
In your opinion, what would be the strongest driver of that overtime? Is it the vacant positions or the not having the 16 new positions?
It would be both. I'd have to put, I'm going to have to put both in there. I cannot, I couldn't say if we had all the positions filled, we'd be fine. But I can't say that because we're adding square footage every year. We've added 500,000 square feet. And so, and we're going to add more when, you know, with the elections, when we buy a new building, it's just more space we're adding. And we don't have technicians to ride around and do those work orders. They just get more square footage to manage. And they get behind and they get frustrated. And when they show up to do a job and the customer's not happy, "Where have you been? I wish you'd have got here sooner. Why didn't you call me?" It's frustrating for them. Then their idea is like, Scott warrants you getting ahead of it. Won't you send an email out to the whole county and tell them you ain't got enough people? And tell them why we're not getting here on time. All right, with that, I'll be quiet.
Not the best situation to be in.
With respect to the professional services, Scott, can you talk to us a little bit more about the scope of the, I guess, the consultant and if there's a plan or a plan to work with the county staff with identifying those issues?
Okay, so if you were to take this building here, we would first have to put the scope together. Do we want them just to look at strictly mechanical parts? Do we want them to come in and look at the condition of the carpet? We want them to come in and can look in addition of everything. Sure, it's going to cost a little more money. That runs, that's going to run you around two to three cents a square foot is what it's going, is that cost is going to be. But that company would come in and look at all, look at what we have and tell us what the condition it is. And they also would look at the utilities. They look at, look at the energy efficient as well, energy efficiency of the building as well. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, but in my follow-up, will staff work alongside the consultant?
We would have to. We're going to have to be in...
So you are providing a fair amount of information to them is what I'm trying to...
Oh, yes. Right. They can't come in. They don't know where all, they wouldn't know where the air handlers are in this building. They're not going to know where all the boxes are over the, in the ceiling, all the plumbing. Yes, we'd have to work with them and, of course, that's going to take time.
And ma'am, like Scott said, they know these buildings, so we would expect them, we're not going to give them, he's got, he said he's got 110 buildings. They've got 200 and something. You know, Water's got another 100, 200. We can't call somebody, we could not pay to do a facilities condition assessment on all of those. We will be relying on those groups to help us decide what buildings we want to bring to the commissioners to put into an RFP that we want to start with on that facility assessment. And that's why we put down some here because I'm going to try, we are going to try to bring that forward to start in the end of '22 if we have a fund balanced capital at the end of the year.
Okay.
Does that, does that help answer your question?
So the line item would cover all 110 buildings that you guys are responsible for?
No, we're going to, we're going to start with the oldest facility and the facilities are in the worst condition. Right.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, I thought earlier it was commented that all of the buildings were included in this study, considering.
Why not, why not consider all of them? Is it just because it won't, it can't happen because of time constraint?
It's just dollars.
But we're asking, we're asking you to ask us for what you need, to do what you need to do. And I just feel like if we don't do this now, when have we had this opportunity to do that? You know, and it's just, I'd hate for us to look two years from now and for us to perceive that we did and we didn't, you know, so.
But the scary part with that would be what we're asking for might be something we can manage the repairs on. If we did every building, every square foot, the dollar cost would be, would be, it would be nuts. So we're trying to put together something that we thought that we can manage when they came back with those items and we can manage and y'all can manage possibly in getting us the money for it as well.
Okay. I hear what you're saying.
But show it all.
I just feel like show it all because a constituent can contact us at any time and say X building has an issue and it may not be on that list and they were back to addressing things that...
General, we'll put together a, we'll put together a cost for getting the entire assessment. It'd be more than a year to do that and I think that's what we should do. And then we just do it in phases. It was just going to be sticker shock if we put that.
We've already been shocked.
We've already been shocked.
Sure, I'll be quick. Yeah, just a ditto on that. It's, it's the idea of if we're going to say no, right? Because I know that's the concern, is what's the no, what's the yes. But at least let us know what we're saying no to.
Okay. Very good.
And it would give us a better idea of how to prioritize in phases. But how far back, you say older buildings. I mean, I know there's some like Gritters that was built in the 60s. But there's also brand-new libraries that were just built in the last two years. So they wouldn't really need an assessment, I wouldn't think, within two to five years or whatever. How far back do you go to assess?
I, I, I hear what you're saying, right?
I'm asking.
I would say, I would say you still have to include those. The 2011 SPOLOs we spent on mechanical, right? We replaced HVAC in 2011. We're in '21. At the end of this 2022 SPOLOs, do you know what? We're going to need to replace the HVAC we replaced in 2011. That doesn't include the other buildings that we didn't replace the equipment in. So everything we're bringing and replacing '11 is going to be into '22. It needs it again. And we're still not addressing all the facilities that we have out there. So with your question, we're going to, I would say we'd want to include it so you would know what year that it would need to be replaced as well. Because some are going to be in the same timeframe.
Okay. But they, the newer ones, I would think, would be at the bottom of the list and move up as, as they get to, you know, aging 10 years and whatever.
And we could look just at mechanical. You could look at just the shell of the building. There's different things we could look at in the new buildings, right? We don't have to look at everything that we might look at in this building. Just look at less in that one.
Thank you, Scott. You sure you're going to retire?
Well, I signed my papers day for yesterday. Feels good. And they said, just go home and the checks will start showing up. I'm fired up here.
But your heart's still going to be here.
It is. It's very hard to leave. I enjoy working here. I enjoy solving problems. And, but it's definitely getting tougher to do.
Yeah, certainly. And it's very important for us to take into account that everything that we have has to be maintained by real people. All of the dreams and goals we have have to be executed by real people and they're facing a real burden when we don't give them the resource that they need to do it. So, thank you. We hate to not have you put all of this in the works, but we appreciate you identifying all the things that can get done to, I think it will be a great way to recognize your contribution to the department to see some of these things get executed.
All right, I'll hush. I think the deputy county manager overs.
All right, thank you. There's only how many more departments left, Jimmy? Thank you.
Next will be Al Curtis with Fleet.
All right.
He's got the motorcycle.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners and Deputy County Manager. My name is Al Curtis, Director of Cobb County Fleet Management. And I appreciate you guys' time today to listen to our projection of our budget request for '23-'24. The picture you see up here right now is my team. Fleet Management. Many of you guys may not know exactly what we do, but I will break a little bit of it down for you and bring you up to speed. Fleet Management, we are a diverse, data-driven, professional group that over the past seven years have placed in the top 100 best fleet in North America. Let's talk a little bit about our mission statement. We provide efficient, effective support of assigned vehicles of Cobb County Government through responsive customer service in our maintenance, repair, fueling, disposal services. Instead of being a rogue, we partner with our departments to identify opportunities and we bring in vehicles, smart vehicles that produce less greenhouse gas emissions. But again, that is just the tip of the iceberg when it comes down to what we do. We manage over 2,500 vehicles across the county, touching every department. We manage 15 fueling stations strategically placed throughout the county as well that pump over a million gallons of fuel with over 136,000 transactions. And we manage all of that. We also manage 29 backup generators. So when the courthouse goes down, we're responsible for keeping fuel in those emergency generators. When emergency 911 may go down, well, the bottom line is they don't go down because they're maintained well and they're fueled consistently. We have tracking mechanisms in place to monitor the fuel to make sure the levels don't drop to a emergency level. This picture here really demonstrates our partnership with our departments. Police, we've been working hand-in-hand with them in deploying smart vehicles. They are one of the premier police departments that have embraced hybrid electric vehicles for some of their pursuit vehicles, which in that particular case, it actually lowers our overall county cost. It reduces maintenance and it allows them to work in their vehicles without idling. As you well know, the police, the biggest part of their job is in the vehicle and, of course, assisting the citizens. They do a lot of their, their office is their car when they're not in the office. So they have to be in the car and running their vehicles. And the hybrid vehicles that we've deployed that they've embraced have been totally beneficial in that case. It allows them to do their work and run on battery power rather than dispersing greenhouse gas emissions into the environment while they sit there and idle. That's one success story that they've done. The next piece is a piece of equipment that we, we work on for DOT. Water has those heavy pieces of equipment. You may not know that we work on all those, big trailers, big trucks, loaders, excavators that go out and do drainage work, that remove trees. All that is within our wheelhouse. As you can see, the senior services, which is a really good success story, they had some really serious issues with their transit buses with seniors. They were leaking and I know Director Gibson talked about that in her presentation, how they were in such disrepair. We worked with them in developing specs and gave them their cost per mile to indicate that they did need buses based on the amount of money they were pouring out to keep these buses on the road. The next picture down on the bottom is our election director, Janine. She's one of our premier, again, departments that have embraced electrification in her department. She doesn't have that many vehicles, but to have elections out there for our citizens to see that we're looking at smart vehicle choices, that we're thinking about the environment, that we're embracing this new electronic, the automotive technology, technology revolution, which is upon us right now. I applaud her for that. She's reduced her overall fuel cost and also her maintenance costs as well. And again, that's Parks and Recs, one of the big tractors they actually have. And the last picture over here, we'll run across that real quickly. Everybody remembers Snowmageddon, that shut down Hold Atlanta. That is police department in line with us with our facility open to make sure we can install chains, wiper blades, and make sure they have their vehicles that are up and running to support the citizens during this traumatic emergency event. So we've been partnering with our departments and we've been working in the background. We're not up front. We're not, of course, customer-facing, but we make our departments that are out there that our customers face, we make their faces look good and we make the county look good in providing that service to keep those vehicles on the road. But we do have challenges. That's one of the reasons we're here, to talk about budget challenges and what we need moving forward to continue to be efficient and effective resource for the county and to continue to take care of our user departments. Some of the challenges, of course, which you probably already heard throughout many presentations is... presentations, is finding, retaining qualified technicians in a highly, highly competitive market. Employees are really tough to find as we know right now. And the automotive field is one of the ones that have been really hit hard. You know, you have plumbers, you have electricians. Those are some of the, I guess, the lucrative type hands-on professions. But we're really lacking in our automotive field in retaining and keeping qualified technicians because they're going in the aftermarket. They're working for Caterpillar, they're working for Cummings, some of the larger companies, and of course, some of the dealerships that can fight a little bit more than we can in compensation. The ever-changing automotive trucking car arena, I mean, we have so much emerging technology that's out there right now. I know most of you guys drive cars or whatever, but you know, vehicles have over 100 different computer components on them. The age of a mechanic with a wrench that you see hanging with a greasy hand is gone away. Technicians are technicians, meaning wearing white coats, using diagnostic software on a computer. It used to be they have tools in their hands. Now they're behind a computer terminal programming all these modules that you have in cars these days. A car is actually a computer on wheels. Basically, that's what it is. So we have to stay abreast of that. We have to make sure we have our employees have the tools, the resources to make sure we keep the efficiency of the vehicles and being able to maintain them. The supply chain fluctuation. I know everybody should be abreast of our supply chain disruption. It's been going on for months now. It started with computers and phones, and then it's actually segwayed into automotive vehicles. We have a catastrophic event in front of us where we can't get vehicles. The manufacturers are not producing them. Orders that we've had have been pushed back to 2023. So that's affecting vehicles, that's affecting parts. And parts prices are going up. You go to the store now and get a gallon of milk. It was $3.299 four, five months ago. It's $3.19, $3.20 right now. I mean, we're feeling it all across the whole globe gambit of all types of products and resources. But this is the bright side. We do have opportunities as well. You can spin some challenges into opportunities, but we do have opportunities in the area of staying abreast of the alternative fuel options that are out there to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, to reduce our overall operational cost. But we have to stay diligent in looking at those opportunities and embracing them. Opportunities also pursue grant opportunities. With President Biden passing that $550 billion infrastructure bill, that's gonna give us opportunity to leverage some of those grant opportunities to continue to embrace environmental change, infrastructure rebuilding and so on. So we're gonna be looking at that. We've done a really good job on embracing some of that right now in the past, but we're gonna be looking forward to more of that right now. Network with local colleges and universities and technical schools. That's where we're gonna be leveraging, trying to work for the county to broaden our employee candidate pool by working with those colleges and saying, hey, going to those, well, actually, I'm on the Chattahoochee Board right now, the Advisory Board. So we sit on the board and we talk to these new people that are going to school, trying to encourage them to look at the automotive arena as a lucrative field of employment. So we've already embraced that. We've already worked on that. But we can continue to move that needle just a little bit further as well. Opportunities in utility companies to broaden our electric charging infrastructure. As I talked about infrastructure before, there's opportunities out there with Georgia Power, Cobb MC, Merida Power. So we're gonna be looking at some of those opportunities as well to pivot some of those models to be able to embrace that and not so much look at general fund money to fund some of these opportunities as well. So we'll talk about our overall budget request. We're asking really for a moderate, modest as well, budget increase of 23.4 across all our lines. That would be personnel, operating and capital. In the next slides, I'll talk more about that as we go through the first one would be personnel. And you see the blue seal of excellence there? That is recognized throughout the whole automotive industry. I don't know if anybody pays attention when they go to automotive repair center or dealership. When you see that, that indicates that there are, they're a CPA in automotive technology. They, that's their craft. And we do, we hold ASE blue seal in our truck shop. Basically, what that indicates is we have 75% of our technicians are ASE certified. And they do have to recertify. It's not a lifelong. So after four years, they have to recertify for their particular credentials that they're ASE certified in. This slide here will talk about a comparison between Cobb County and Gwinnett County. So just looking apples to apples in like counties, as you can see, their personnel budget is right at $3.4 million. Ours is at $2.6. And we have like vehicle as far as quantities. We have about 2,500 pieces of equipment, 25, I think, 25, and they're right at 29. And if you look to the slide, draft to the right, we have 24 technicians to handle those 25-plus vehicles, 2,500-plus vehicles. They have 20, 29. And looking at the, Commissioner?
Okay, so yeah, it says projection 3050 vehicles for Cobb County in the second graph?
That is correct. I hadn't got there yet, but.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the protection, projection for 2023, we're looking at over 3,000 vehicles within our fleet, based on some of the county, other departments' requests and also the overall request for replacement funds, replacement budget as well. So with that particular time there, we'll still be at 24 technicians. That's what we're looking at for an increase of two technicians to accommodate that additional workload, that additional vehicle support. And again, as I talked about, the automotive technology revolution, as you see on TV, I know, we have vehicles that are gonna be driving themselves. We're gonna have vehicles that, and if you've seen the commercial, Ford's already embraced it, riding down the road with its hands off, hands off the wheel. That technology is here. It's not tomorrow. 2023, they're gonna be, that vehicle is actually gonna be produced. All it is is a module that they turn on. Vehicles are gonna come with that technology already built in, similar to a Tesla. All they do is activate it and you can utilize that particular, that technology. So we're gonna need people, high-level people, technician-wise people that can actually dig in, program cars and allow us not, one, to take them to the dealership and wait in line, but be unable to do these things ourselves. And that keeps us sufficient, that keeps us sustainable as well. This slide really indicates where these two positions are gonna lie. It would be one in the automotive technician three, which is one of the top-level technicians that we have in automotive in our department, to help combat that influx of the technology that's gonna be thrust upon us, that's already a thorn in us now. And then the other one is the truck equipment tech one. So again, I'm asking for basically a modest increase of two technicians to be able to help us continue to be efficient and keep our vehicles moving. This right here is a projection of the increase of vehicles over a period of time. I know, Commissioner, you were asking about the 3,000 vehicles, and this is basically a graph indicating as the years progress, how we'll add more vehicles to the fleet. And then at the end, as right now, of course, we have 24 technicians. Hopefully, if we get the budget increases that we need across for personnel, we'll have 26 to be able to, again, work on staying efficient, staying productive, and help us definitely lower our overall cost and total cost of ownership on vehicles based on the vehicle repairs that we'll be doing. These are two positions that we're talking about and how the money aligns there. Kind of on the right side, justification on what, similar to what these positions are gonna be accomplishing. Of course, there'll be more, there'll be more things that they'll be doing, but this is basically a summary of some of the things that we're looking at them taking care of if we do get the positions that we're looking for. This next slide is a representation of our operating budget, some operating things that we're looking at. See the heavy equipment there? That's part of the supply chain disruption that we talked about. Those parts for those heavy pieces of equipment, the delay in getting those parts, the parts themselves to replace and repair and maintain them have astronomically increased. And then some of the parts for some of the old equipment that we have are not even produced anymore. So we have to go to different manufacturers to get those parts manufactured and built or made, which of course slows down that process and of course increases the cost. The slide up there on the upper right is one of our technicians programming a vehicle. You see he's on his laptop. He's running a diagnostic scope on it to find out why a check engine light's on and why the vehicle's running rough. That's part of what we need as far as training dollars and more software to make sure, again, we keep these vehicles on the road efficiently. And the bottom portion is our guys in training. That's one of the key pieces. We have to have training dollars, more training dollars as the vehicle technology totally increased across the board. And like I said before, this automotive technology revolution is not gonna stop. What's, it's just like the iPhone. They may have iPhone 13 today. Year down the line, it's gonna be iPhone 14. And it's gonna be a different technology, just a little piece of something added to it to make it just that more difficult to repair and maintain. This is the operating budget. Again, we're asking for a small, modest increase of 6.1% increase at that particular line. That is actually a beautiful picture of our new facility. Thank you, Commissioners and Chairwoman, for attending that open house, that ribbon cutting. It was a very, it was a really good success. And it has been broadcasted throughout my fleet industry and got great reviews, just to give you the heads up on that. This here is the breakdown of the operating items, object lines throughout that increase. Roughly $146,000 across all those lines, which again, training is involved in that, software and licensing, professional services. Motor parts is again, one of the larger ones. As I said, that increase is gonna, it is upon us now. And trying to get the parts efficiently, effectively through the logistic chain has been challenging. We know there's containers that are sitting out in ports right now that can't get through because they don't have adequate people and boats to move them. And warehousing itself is being challenged as well without having warehouse workers. It's affecting, again, from the milk in the store to the parts that we need for vehicles, to vehicles themselves. So just cognizant of that, most of our manufacturers are telling us that they don't know when the end's gonna be. The supply, of course, is outweighing, I mean, actually, demand is outweighing the supply. And it's kind of hard to tell when we'll be back to pre-COVID operational across the supply chain. Last, but least, this capital we'll talk about. Left-hand top, that is our fueling infrastructure. We have roughly about 15 different fueling stations strategically placed around the county. And most of them are over 10 years old. We have many that are 15 years old plus. And again, like I said before, we do about a million gallons of fuel, equating to about $3.4 million every year. And as we know with COVID, that dropped just a bit. But moving out of COVID, we've already seen a drastic increase since many of us are back working, many of our departments are back working and on the road again. So that, those islands are gonna be getting a lot more usage. And being 15 years old, we're gonna need to do some replacement of roofs, we're gonna need some replacement of some fuel islands, some infrastructure pieces all across the globe on that. Backup generator, we talked about that as far as fueling. We don't have one. If our fleet goes down, we are down. That means our fuel island's down. That is one of the, our fuel island at fleet is one of the biggest and the most high-volume fuel island that we have in the county. It is utilized by everyone. And we don't have a backup generator. And we've actually had, over the past four years, about eight blackouts at our fleet because that infrastructure that we have and the electric box and just all that infrastructure itself is, and the lines and everything that go to the actual facility is the issue. We've had people running in the poles. We've just had just lines that are just bad. And we do have two structures there. We have the new structure and we have the old structure that is still there. That old structure is where the fuel island and all the power comes in at, which is the 50-year-old building. So we definitely need backup resources to make sure we can work on vehicles if, in light of if we do have a power outage or something of that nature. Sheriff's vehicles. We have, as we go through the slide, you'll see we have money set aside for their, their vehicles are, we have over 80 vehicles in the Sheriff's Department that have already meet and exceeded the replacement criteria. I'm not gonna say nothing for the past regime, but they had not requested vehicle funds and vehicle replacements like they should. So now we need to try to bring them up to speed. They're in the backlog of vehicles that need to be replaced. So we have money set aside in that as we'll see the next slide to replace those vehicles and bring them up to speed. They still have canine vehicles. They still have dogs in Crown Vics, a Crown Vic, a dog in a Crown Vic. When it needs to be in a Tahoe or something SUV for comfort leveling for cooling when they're out on a site or whatever. So that, they have some of that older equipment, older vehicles still within their fleet that need to go away. And the next slide is basically, that's the heavy-duty equipment that we need, is it particular filters and particular filter cleaners that need to be used to actually keep that particular equipment on the road as well. This breaks down the capital budget as you see, that's one of the bigger ask at 41.3%. And again, the only reason it's that large is because of the, the next slide, you'll see there's a million dollars that is set aside for the sheriff for vehicles. That's what brings that up to the 41%. And I'll click that. Here's a breakdown, again, of the ask and the object lines that they reflect. That million dollars is for, again, the Sheriff's Department in bringing their vehicles up to speed when it comes down to replacement criteria. That will actually, they, this year, they have $500,000 that we're gonna be doing something with, but we need to really do a catch-up on their vehicles. And like I said, they have vehicles that are old Crown Vics, which we rarely have any Crown Vics still left in the fleet because they get about eight miles per gallon. And they, they produce a lot of greenhouse gas emissions. They're V8 vehicles. And as a fleet and as a county, we're trying to move away from some of those bigger vehicles that produce so much greenhouse gas emissions. And with them being old, they're increasing our operational cost. And fleet, all the operational budget, all the repairs, all the parts come out of our budget. So that's definitely gonna tax our budget if we don't do anything in bringing them up to speed as far as that. And again, this is the last slide that summarizes our ask. Overall ask across the board, 23.4% increase over all those object lines. And I hope I, I hope I gave you the information that you need to make the choices. And I'm sorry I didn't give a lot of people a lot of time to ask questions, but I'd like to open up for questions now. And I'll be glad to go back to any slides that you may want me to talk about.
Okay. Well, this one wasn't on the slide, but when we had the tour, recall there being conversation around servicing vehicles from other counties and municipalities. Do you have a projected revenue amount or line item?
Well, Commissioner, this is gonna be the first year we're taking on this. And we, I mean, it has been, it's been very well-received. And projected revenue, I mean, it's kind of hard to say because I can tell you what we did last year, wrapping up last year, I think it was roughly about, about $29,000.
That's just a part of the year, right?
Yeah, it was just part of that particular year, about $29,000. But we are, we've really ramped up this year. But we are, we've really ramped up this year to look at operating more like a business. And my background is from private to public. So I, I'm well versed in looking at those opportunities and capitalizing on those opportunities if I'm given the chance.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So in your increase in vehicles to the 3,050, does that include the ones that you're going to be servicing from other counties?
No.
Or municipalities?
It does not. They're on a, we have them on a, in our maintenance operation, in our maintenance system. They're, all of what we do for them are in a whole totally different category. We can break up different shops and, and do metrics on just our stuff. And if they need metrics on their, their repairs and maintenance, we can do that as well.
How does that impact our ability to service our vehicles? Particularly given the issues that you shared in the Sheriff's Office? How, how would bringing in outside vehicles impact our ability to service?
That's a, that's a great question. That question was posed before we took on this opportunity. And with the new building, it gave, gave us a lot bigger and a lot broader footprint to allow us to have more vehicles in and be able to service them. So it, it has no impact on that.
What about from a staffing perspective?
From a staffing perspective, we, this is going to be, like I said, our second year going into this. And we haven't had any issues except for, we know we're going to be getting an increase of vehicles. So that's why we're asking for two additional people. But the, the Powder Springs vehicles has not really an impact on us asking for those two persons, as the two positions that we're asking for.
Okay, and I presume the return is far above and beyond the staffing that, or the resources that are dedicated to that?
Say that again, Chairwoman.
The return to the department is greater considering the revenue generated than the resources that have to be dedicated to that task?
That is correct. That is correct.
Can you share with me again, and I know I came out to the facility and you answered this before, but what are we going to do with that older facility? Yes, the goal will continue to utilize it?
That is, that was a question that came up as well. Yes, we have staff that are actually working outside. We know it's hot in Georgia and it does get cold. And we have them with cold weather and hot weather gear. But that's going to allow us to bring those employees in-house, inside. That's going to aid in our retention of those employees when they can go work at a dealership in an air conditioning shop. This is our heavy duty shop as well. Our light duty shop, we're, we're going to be blessed with conditioned space, which that, that process in the works right now. But our heavy duty guys, they're out there with the big wrenches with, out in the weather where some of the equipment, it can't be pulled inside, but most of it can. So we're going to be repurposing that space. Property management has been done, a lot of property managers working with us to, to, to get that building where it can accommodate the larger pieces of equipment. And we'll be grateful to have it. But that's what, that's what the plan is. And that's what we're already in the process of doing right now.
Okay, great. Commissioners, do you have any other questions? I want to thank you for just the level of professionalism that you run your department in. Not even just from a hands-on operational perspective, but the planning and strategizing around the work that you do, how you measure performance. I've always been very impressed. And it gives us a lot of confidence, at least it gives me a lot of confidence with your requests, that you've been more than diligent in, in evaluating what your needs are. Just thank you, thank you for letting us look so good on a national level with all the awards your department has received. And also thank you, this is another question I could have added, but thank you for your consideration for technological advancement and environmental sensitivity as well. So we have a lot of vehicles that you maintained, 3,000 plus. And there's this advancement of fleet moving to more alternative fuels. So what does that look like with our current fleet in that transition? Does your budget take that transition into consideration? Or are we looking at what we have here today?
Well, my perspective is, I take my blinders off. The way we've done things in the past is not my direction. And I, I take direction from the board, of course. But our job should be to make this place better than we found it. And if we don't start making some really concerted effort to change our thought process as far as what we deploy and what we're putting our money into and our environment, what we're going to leave for our kids, climate change, then we're, we're missing it. I, I go to different conferences and I talk to many different fleet managers from California, from New Jersey, from all over the world. And sustainability and, and, and looking out for our environment on where we're going to be in the next 10 years. With the climate change initiative that President Biden talked about, 2050, 2030 is where we need to be 50% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. That's coming from the President. And he's put his money where his mouth is. We're passing that $550 billion infrastructure, charging station, electric vehicle. I mean, it's, it's where we want to go and it's the direction that I think we need to be going to save us money. And I mean, no matter if we don't jump on it now, it's, it's going to come. It's here, it's coming. And either we'll, either we'll be in front of it, on side of it, or behind it. And I know with Cobb, we expect the best. We lead the way. And that's what we need to, that's what we need to embrace. And we need to have the funding to be able to do it. And the departments that are asking for vehicle money and we're asking for vehicle funding, we're going to be looking for alternatives to gas vehicles. That's my perspective and that's, if that's the, the thought and the direction from upper management. That's where I want to go. That's where I think we need to go. But I don't make those choices. I, I recommend. All I can do is recommend. That's it.
Help us help you in that regard. And I know I've spoken with you in Keep Cobb Beautiful about sustainability efforts. I would just hate for us to be putting in a lot of money towards something that we really are transitioning away from. And then we end up having to make a larger expenditure to get us to where things are evolving to, particularly because of those resources that you said are basically here. And so if this plan doesn't incorporate that, please help us to know how we can be positioning the budget to help facilitate that. Because I'd hate for us to approve something that just misses the mark and this becomes a, a greater task to, to address later on.
I'm all in. When, when departments typically bring vehicle stuff to the board, they're supposed to run it through us and buy us so we can be on the same page. As long as the piece of equipment meets the mission, it doesn't make a difference from what fuel source it runs on. It should be on something alternative or buy or something to that effect. As long as it will perform the mission that the department has to have, then we'll approve it. But we're going to be looking more when we, when stuff comes across our desk that says, I want 25 gas vehicles and that's all I want. Say you want 25 vehicles. And it doesn't make a difference as long as that vehicle meets your duty cycle and your, your mission. So I, I thank you for the, the comments. And if there's not any more questions, I'm going to turn it over to my counterpart, Kimberly, Limberly.
Thank you. And Kimberly, before you come up, I'm just, I'm going to ask for us to take a 10-minute break and come back here. And I'm sorry, just thank, yes, I see, yes. Matter of fact, why don't we just round and come back at three Commissioners? Thank you.
Right, that's true.
Thank you and welcome back to today's work session. We will be continuing our budget presentation with Support Services and kicking off with Information Services.
Good afternoon Chairwoman, Commissioners and Deputy County Manager. Kimberly Limley, I S Director. I wanted to start off before we jump into the presentation. I just want to start off by thanking you for your support. In June, I completed my first year as I T Director and it was an eventful year. But the support that you've shown me through this past year has been invaluable and it's evident that you understand the critical needs of technology and you know areas such as cyber security. I just want to really thank you for your support and the trust that you've given me to lead this department. I also want to second what Sharon said earlier. Thank you for the opportunity to let us present our budget presentations to you. I know it's tough to hear and it's going to be even tougher to make the decisions that you're going to have to make in the next couple of months leading up to this 2324 budget. So, thank you again. I want to also thank our I S management team for their input into this presentation and Mariana Gunther, our Business Manager, for helping put this presentation together and Bill Buddy and Susan from Finance as well. They've been amazing to work with on all these numbers. So, thank you. And then also just want to thank our I S staff for everything they do. They work hard behind the scenes, nights and weekends to keep this county running smoothly or to help keep this county running smoothly. So, I really appreciate them. So, a short, just a short summary of our mission statement is to partner, much like other Support Services agents or departments, we partner with other county departments to deliver innovative and cost-effective solutions to our constituents to support the business operations of the county while maintaining a stable and secure infrastructure, technology infrastructure. So, our challenges and opportunities for improvement. A lot of our challenges are related back to staffing. And as you're probably aware, the demand for I T professionals right now is at an all-time high. And we have to be competitive not only with other local governments and municipalities, but also the private sector because typically when we have someone that leaves, they're not necessarily leaving for another government agency, they're leaving for a private sector. So, I want to give you one example of a position, the Cyber Security Manager position which you all approved in June. I want to preface this by saying that you know we've filled that position in our selection. We're so happy with our selection. He's doing an excellent job, but I just want to share a little bit of some of the statistics. So, when we posted the position in our applicant tracking software, you can see how many people have viewed the position, looked at the job description. So, when it was, when it had closed, we had 851 people that looked at the posting. So, I'm going to give you a quiz here. Does anyone want to guess how many applicants that we actually had referred to us from those 851 that looked at it, how many were referred to us from H R to possibly interview?
What's the referral criteria?
Well, there's a lot. We'll have to get H R up here.
A hundred.
Okay, anybody else?
Two, fifty.
Twelve. So, we had twelve applicants refer to us. When we started the interview process, three of those applicants had already dropped out for other positions. So, again, we're, you're really happy with our selection, but that's just an example of how competitive it is right now. And that's not necessarily every single job that we have that's like that, but definitely the more technical and higher level positions, that's what we're looking at every time we post one of those positions. We do have currently seven vacancies in the department. We're still filling some of the Security Administrators that were also approved in June, so those are included in that. It's soon to be eleven because we have two people retiring, one in December and one in January, and then two people are leaving, one's moving out of the country and one is going to a federal job. So, that's, we've been averaging anywhere from probably around five vacancies just over the past couple of years at any given time, five to seven. Another challenge that we have is the expectations of our customers, both internal and external. So, the citizens and businesses that conduct business with the county, as well as our internal customers, want services at their fingertips anytime, you know, day or not. And it's at times a struggle to keep up with with those demands at our current staffing levels. So, I'm going to give you another little example of something that occurred recently. Monday before last, I received a call from the District Attorney's Office explaining that the, their prosecution team was having a lot of technical issues while they were down in Brunswick. And they were desperate for help and requested that we have someone come down to help them out. They were presenting their case and lots of technical issues. They took things with them, laptops, you know, all the different things, but just kept having technical issues. So, we reached out to our staff for volunteers and we had an employee volunteer, Matt Morgan. And by that afternoon, Monday afternoon, he was headed down to Brunswick with an I T emergency kit, if you want to call it, with everything we could possibly imagine that they might need, you know, to get through some of these issues. He stayed all last week, stayed through the weekend. He's still there today. We hope he comes back tomorrow. And he will get to be here for Thanksgiving, but he's going to go back down to Brunswick to help them out during their closing arguments. So, I say those, I tell you this story because it's, it's an example of the level of customer service that we strive to provide for all of our customers. I mean, this is a unique situation, but it just shows the dedication that we have to our employee, to our customers. We want to help make their job easier for them and provide a certain level of support. And thirdly, it kind of, it shows the dependence of technology that our customers have and how critical that we are to their day-to-day, to day-to-day functioning. You know, we're really glad this worked out and we were able to provide support for the D A's office who is prosecuting a case that is, you know, being watched by the entire country. But with our current staffing levels, all of his, his work was transitioned to other people, which we can, not to say we can't get that done, but it just delays, you know, certain projects and certain work orders. And so, there's, there's, you know, it's fortunate that we can do it, but it's also a, we've got to divvy up the workload. And so, it just takes longer to get things done. So, another, you know, challenge is just along with the demands is to ensure that our existing staff have the training that they need on all the new technology that's rapidly changing. And then lastly, just keeping up with the constant cyber security threats that we have. It's every, they're, you know, they're one step ahead of us every day. So, that's definitely a challenge and it's at the forefront of everything that we do. So, here's our summary slide. On the operating budget, we're requesting approximately 7.4 million increase. This does not include our capital improvement, capital replacement requests that we discussed over the last couple of weeks. We'll get into that a little bit later. We're going to start with our personnel request. We are requesting about 3 million in personnel requests and that's for thirty-three positions. So, you can see at the bottom of the slide, there's a breakdown. That's twenty-eight new full-time positions, one new part-time position, and then we're asking for four part-time positions to be reclassified to full-time. So, this is a high-level overview of our org chart. And on the right side, you can see the current headcount and then the position, the position request in red, which is that middle box, and then the total headcount, if, the proposed total headcount if those positions were approved. And that's 157 full-time and one part-time. So, I want to make sure I mention one thing that's a little bit different from the last slide. So, on the last slide, I said twenty-eight positions, this is twenty-nine. This represents an additional position that we're going to be asking for. We'll go over it in a minute with, for 911. 911 is going to fund that position, so it's not in our budget request. But I do want to represent it on this because they are reporting to I S if that position were approved. Okay, so this is a graph showing the growth of technology versus the growth in our technology staff over the last fourteen years. So, and I want to specify technology positions because we also have our postal records and administrative staff that don't necessarily support this type of technology. So, we're going to start with the top line, the orange line. That represents the growth of the call center tickets from 2007 to 2021. And you can see that number's almost doubled from around sixteen thousand to about thirty thousand. The gray, the blue line, the next line, represents the desktop and public safety devices supported. So, this is probably the area where there's the biggest growth from about sixty-seven hundred to twenty thousand. Those include, in terms of the public safety devices, it includes all of the in-car cameras, body worn cameras. This also includes sheriff devices as well, mobile data computers in the vehicles, mobile wireless routers, all of those things. The gray line, the next line down, shows the number of network devices supported. So, the routers, switches, firewalls, every wireless access points, everything that keeps us running. That's from four thousand to seventy-three hundred. And then the very last line, the flattest line, of course, is the staff. So, from 2007, we had a hundred, so there's some fluctuations there. Obviously, that was during the economic downturn. We lost some positions. So, really from seven to now, we've gained nine technology positions where our technology has doubled or tripled in some cases, the technology that we support. And there is a more detailed slide in your handout, your backup handout, that shows these numbers broken down and the number, and the different positions that were added over the years.
Kim, are you outsourcing any of your work to third parties to help cover some of these?
We have, so some things are like, we've got to, you know, run new cabling for the Mansour Center, for the new elections building. That, that kind of thing is outsourced to a vendor and they run all of the cable for us and then we come in and we install the actual equipment. And then we do, and I'll show you on this slide, we have one contractor who is a technical writer for us. She is, we've been able to probably keep her, we've had her for a couple of years now. But yeah, I mean, we outsource certain things when it makes sense. So, this is our comparison to the Gwinnett County Information Technology Services Department. And they're structured very similar to us where we're, we're both enterprise I T for the county. When you look at the first line of full-time positions, it's not, doesn't appear like it's that big of a, of a difference. But then when you look at the, the rest of it, you know, you have your part-time, we have the four part-time, they have eighteen contractors, where we have the one technical writer, they have sixty-three, which is, you know, a huge difference. So, when you total up all the staff that, that they have versus ours, Gwinnett has eighty-nine more positions than we do. And they only support about seven hundred more full-time employees than us. And then their population is about a hundred and fifty thousand more than what Cobb is. So, additionally, I meet with a couple of C I Os in the metro area on a monthly basis. And I know that the Gwinnett County C I O is going to be asking for an additional fourteen full-time positions for her staff in their F Y twenty-two budget, which I think is calendar year. So, she's probably already requested those. So, that's just another fourteen more. So, I'm going to go over, I'm going to try not to go over this in a lot of detail, but I want to hit a couple of highlights. So, this, this first position that we have listed here, Application Support Analyst. This is the, this is to help us manage the increasing workload of fulfilling all of the legal demands that we have. So, the open records requests, legal holds, discovery, subpoenas. Billie Rowling and I have spoken a lot about this in detail and we just can't keep up with the number of requests that are coming in. We don't have a dedicated person for this. So, when we get a request, as you know, these are very time-sensitive matters. And so, we pretty much have to drop everything that we're doing and shift to completing these requests. And it's just gotten to where it's way more than we can manage. And that also causes a problem where there could be, because we're so overwhelmed at times, you know, we could potentially miss something that, you know, miss a email that's been requested or something like that. So, we really want to get someone focused in this area. The next two positions are for the judicial team support of all the new technology that they're using and will be using throughout the court system in the upcoming years. We, of course, you know, we significantly improved the technology in the courts using the CARES funding. But in the 2022 S P L O S, we have eighteen million dollars set aside for judicial technology alone. So, this is going to require more staff to implement and support all of this, this technology. And then we're also requesting that one of these positions be mostly dedicated to supporting the State Court Clerk's Office with their technology needs. The next line, the Solutions Analyst two positions, though this is strictly for just the increase in technology in these departments listed here, Community Development, County Attorney, all, I don't need to read them to you, but we're growing in every department and every department is more and more dependent on technology. The next group of positions are public safety-related. So, currently in 911 and the Fire Department, they each have one position dedicated to supporting their technology. So, the amount of technology, as you can imagine, that, that 911 uses is tremendous. And with Melissa and her team's vision, it's just going to increase, which is a great thing for our, you know, citizens. Using technology for 911 is amazing and it's just going to add to better response times. But that's going to require additional support staff. The Fire Department, the need is, is not just for, because of their dependency on technology, which is also very high, but also for the sheer number of locations that they have to support. We have one person supporting twenty-nine fire stations, will be thirty, in all the other locations, the headquarters, Annex, the Training Center, Safety Village. It's just too much for one person to manage and to respond to everything in a timely manner. For the Sheriff's Office, we're requesting four positions. Right now, they have, they currently have four I T positions that report to us. And I'll just say, they've been understaffed for a really long time. Four positions hasn't been enough for them for the last several years. And I know that is critical to Sheriff Owens that we upgrade and we improve that technology in his department. to Sheriff Owens that we upgrade and we improve that technology, um, in his department. And we're going to have to have additional staff to do that. Um, this is going to, if we were to get these positions, this is going to align the SO with, the SO support with the same support that we provide the rest of public safety. The team sizes would be about, about equal. Um, and this would also give them an after-hours position that would work 3:00 PM to midnight, just like we have on the, um, public, the rest of public safety side. Um, that helps, that not only helps the customer service for those people that work, um, those hours, you know, at the, at ADC, um, to have somebody right there to be able to help them, but also it helps relieve the on-call staff. So the, these four people are in an on-call rotation. And I will tell you that oftentimes they work a whole day in the office and by the time, I mean, they don't even get in their door at home before their phone is ringing for an after-hours on-call issue. So they get home and they go straight to work again. Um, and I can tell you, I, I lived this for many years when I was in the public safety support team. And, um, it, it wears on you and it, it drains you, especially when you're in a small group with a small rotation where you're on-call every, every three, four weeks. So, um, I'm, I'm really hoping that we can get some assistance for them because I know that it leads to employee burnout, much like Scott was saying earlier. Um, and then the last two positions are for, uh, two network engineers. And that is just directly related to supporting our expanding network. Every time we bring on a new facility, we have more devices to support, more network devices to support. So our, our next slide, um, the, the highlight of this one is really, um, the request to form, to form a new enterprise division. So for, for the enterprise division, we would move our GIS on-base, web, and physical security, physical security support in this division. And we are requesting that the staff here listed, our, our additional staff to support GIS, um, the, the web team, the customer relationship management system that if approved will be used by, by Ross's team, the CRM 311, and then dedicated staff to support our enterprise access control and surveillance, uh, camera systems. Currently, we have about five people, uh, including myself still, who spend a portion of their day supporting this, this system. And currently, we have about 650 access control doors in the county now, and well over 1,000 surveillance cameras that were responsible for main, for maintaining. So, um, this number also grows. Every time we remodel an office or acquire a new facility, um, it, it grows and we need dedicated staff. Um, additionally, on this slide, we are asking for additional support for, um, our procurement group and contract management. Uh, we manage close to 200 technology contracts. Last year, we processed over 1,700, uh, documents and receivers, and, uh, for a total of about $25 million. So we, we have a accountant and our business manager that handles that aspect of it. And then for our contracts, right now, we're working on 11 contracts, actively, actively working on 11 contracts. And we have one person, uh, responsible for this. And there's just no way that she can get these things completed in a timely manner. Um, Bill can attest to the amount of time it takes to work through contracts and, and get a final clean version that we're, we're comfortable with. So, um, we definitely need some, some growth in that area. And then the last group of positions are just directly related to the growth in the number of devices that we support now and the increase in call center tickets. So we're asking for three technology services supervisors, two technical support analysts, and then this is the conversion of one part-time analyst to a full-time, and then the conversion of two part-time call center agents to, um, to full-time. Right now, we have two full-time people at the call center and two part-time. And it's really a struggle when one person calls in or one person takes annual leave. It's, it's really hard to, to cover the call center. Okay? So any questions so far? I know that's a lot to take in, but, okay. So, um, this is our summary slide for our operating budget requests. We're requesting an increase of about 4.3 million. And you'll see on this detailed slide, the majority of this request is in hardware and software maintenance increases, and that's based off agenda items that were approved by the board in '20 and '21. So your back out, backup handout has all those agenda items listed with the amounts and the date of the board meeting. So if you need more detail, go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
Have we exhausted all of our 16 SPOS money for IS?
No, we have not yet, but we have, uh, several projects lined up that we are, you plan to use that money for. So if we're able, if we get approval for those projects, it's four, four, I think four projects, um, we will have exhausted all of that money at that point.
And then, do you recall what we have in the 2022 SPOS for?
Um, we have 6 million, I believe, for, uh, infrastructure upgrades, um, the 18 million in judicial technology, 2 million in cybersecurity, and I'm trying to think of the other. Does anybody, do you remember the other? I can't think of the other one.
Digital.
Digital government. I can't remem, 9 million, maybe?
Yeah, I believe it's digital.
I think it's 9 mil. I'll get the, the firm answer for you, but I think it's 6 or 9 million.
This is just personnel? This 3 million? Or no?
Um, on the previous line, or, um, this is not personnel.
Personnel is 3 million, but operating?
Is four, 4.3.
Okay.
Yes.
And that would include software, equipment?
And so if you look at the subscription services line, this is one of the items I talked to y'all about, you know, when we were talking about the CIP CRS. Um, these are three of the projects that we have that we plan to use SPOS funding for. The archive and archiving and e-discovery system. So the SPOS funding would be for the initial implementation. So that's the, the product that we would work with county attorneys on. And then, um, the subscription services for the 3, the 311 CRM and some additional software for Ross's shop. And then the hosted, uh, tax system. The other project that we have of those four that we're looking to, to use SPOS money for is a new, um, e-procurement contract management system. And we're partnering with purchasing, um, on the, and the county attorney and finance, a lot of different departments are, we're going to be working on that and releasing RFP, um, hopefully, uh, after the first of the year sometime. And that would pretty much take, take out 2016's SPOS. Okay? Any other questions on that? Okay. And then the remaining technology costs here are just like based off the new position request, additional training needs, and then an increase to cover some additional cost in the, in the cellular, um, plan. Um, our, so our request in the, um, in our capital budget is, is just to purchase a new vehicle, uh, at $45,000 for our voice and data communications team. Fleet has been gracious, gracious enough to let us have a loaner vehicle for probably well over six months now. Um, so it's definitely a long-term loaner, but we really need something to carry equipment, uh, tools, ladders. Uh, this team is out driving around the different county facilities, construction sites, and we need something, a dedicated vehicle for them to, to carry this equipment. Okay, this is our CIP CRS request of the capital improvement, capital replacement requests. And this is what we went over in detail in our, in our previous meetings. So our request is a 2.1 million increase to the general fund budget. And then in this next slide, uh, we also show the fire and water increases as well. Um, so I'm not going to go in a lot of detail on this slide, but, because we've already discussed it with you. But, uh, like I said previously, these, these are requests that are like ongoing, equipment replacement needs, equipment that reaches end of life after a certain year, a certain number of years. You're not able to, um, do patches and, and do any kind of updates to them. And when, when we get to that point, um, then that becomes a security issue. Um, when you can't do the latest, greatest software, uh, that's a, that's a hole in, in the network. So, um, we're asking to be able to replace that equipment. These are things like desk phones and switches and firewalls, routers. Um, we're also requesting to upgrade our phone system and, and implement a backup system or failover system for the enterprise surveillance and access control system. And then, um, additional funding in cybersecurity and requesting to replace our asset management change control and call center ticketing, ticketing systems. Um, there's also an increase request for the GIS budget of about $20,000, just for additional equipment, training, and some new software licenses. All right, postal and records. Um, this is the, um, we're going to transition away from the IT side and, and go into postal and records. So this is just our summary slide of requests totaling an increase of around 416,000. Um, we're, we are not requesting an, any increase in personnel, but I wanted to give you the summary slide of what the, the current personnel budget is. Um, in the operating budget, we're asking for 197,000 to cover the increased cost of postage and an increase in outgoing mail throughout the county. We're also asking to lease two digital scanning machines, one in mail and one in records management to digitize paper records coming in. Both of these machines have annual maintenance costs of about $23,000. Um, we're requesting, uh, so I'll give you a second to look at that. Um, those are, the other things are just minor, like office supplies, uniform and, and clothing. Okay? And then this is the, um, annual cost for fiscal year '24 of the, um, the scanning equipment.
Excuse me, Kimberly, do you cover the cost of postage or just the processing?
We do.
Oh, you do cover them?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And then this is our, uh, capital budget request. So we're asking 219,000 in capital funding to cover costs of additional shelving needed in our warehouse, as well as a new forklift. And there's some, some detail on that. And you're going to see some, uh, pictures in your backup handout of one of our facilities in, in records management. So if you have, once you have a chance to look at that, if you have any questions, please let me know. Um, and then, oh, sorry, I went too far. So this is our, our summary slide. So in closing, our request, our total request is approximately 7.4 million in increase in the IS operating and capital budget, 2.1 million in capital replacement, capital improvement request, and then 416,000 in the postal and records operating and capital budget. Any questions?
Thank you, Kimberly, for, um, walking us through, um, the request of the department. I know we've been working a lot together this year, so.
I know. A lot of this probably shouldn't strike us as a surprise, but I'll check and see if commissioners have any questions for, for Kimberly.
You're all questioned out, probably.
Just to thank you for always coming to our rescue.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Glad to help.
Okay.
Greatly appreciative.
All right.
How's the puppy?
Yeah. He's wonderful.
He has a new boxer.
All right. Um, so I'm going to turn it over. Thank you again for your time and attention. I appreciate it. I'm going to turn it over to Roger Ball, our purchasing director.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Deputy County Manager. Uh, before I get started with my presentation, I do want to recognize, uh, my staff, the purchasing team. Some of them are here today. I want to thank specifically Stephanie Bryce, the deputy director, has done a tremendous job in helping, had been supportive, uh, during my eight-month tenure here and helped to, uh, provide a lot of the key material, uh, for this, uh, presentation. Uh, when I repatriated to the United States, uh, from Philippines eight months ago, I had no idea what I was in store for. But I can tell you, I, I couldn't have asked for a better team, better organization, a better boss, and Sharon Stanley as well. So it's been a, uh, it's been great alignment for me. And I just want to, uh, recognize, uh, the team for everything that, uh, that they've done. Um, I do want to point out to you that, um, uh, my numbers are significantly smaller than what you've seen from my other colleagues in the county, which should provide some relief. Uh, the reason I say that is because the purchasing department, uh, we're small in total personnel. Uh, there are 11 of us, uh, 12 with a contract staff person. But I will say that, uh, our challenges and our opportunities are, are just as significant and real as they are in many of the larger departments. And I'll talk about that in, uh, more detail later. I'm sorry, my voice is a little hoarse right now, so if you can bear with me. Um, as far as our mission, uh, we aim to, uh, purchase high-quality goods and services at optimum cost. And, uh, we, we try to do that in a very fair and transparent manner and to make sure that we're always conducting ourselves, uh, in a way that displays the highest, uh, degree of, uh, ethics and, and integrity. As far as the core functions, uh, and procurement and the nuts and bolts of what we do, I think I can better explain it this way. If you were to look around, uh, in any county facility, anywhere 360 degrees, uh, whether you're in a public park, you're in a library, senior services center, a police station, fire station, probate court, or even here in the BOC meeting room, you'll see an array of goods and services. Well, these, uh, these, these goods and services didn't just magically appear. Um, they were procured through a very structured process. And that's, that's what we do in the purchasing department. We're the gateway for these goods and services that are required, that are acquired by the county. And the fundamental objective of what we do is pretty simple. We, we buy the highest quality goods and services at optimum costs, and we do it in a way that, um, complies with county policy, aligns with, uh, world-class procurement practices, and, uh, and adheres to the highest, uh, highest ethical standards. Every year, we purchase a little over $200 million in goods and services. That's with 11 individuals. Um, so, you know, with 11, we, we purchase $200 million every year so that the decisions that my team makes in buying these goods and services can, in many cases, um, determine the financial viability of the county. So yes, we are a small department, but the magnitude of our work and the decisions that we make have huge impact in the county. Like other, uh, departments in the county, we all, we also have challenges and opportunities that are significant and real over the past 10 to 15 years. The procurement function has changed drastically, both in the public and private sector. What used to be a very, um, reactive, hand-to-mouth, process-driven function has now evolved into a new strategic role. That strategic role has now become, you know, more anticipating and, and guiding. Uh, in addition, you know, that role has become more cut, more, uh, customer-focused, more integrated with that, uh, throughout the organization and value-driven. At any given time, uh, in, in, in our department, we need to know what is being purchased here in the county, how much is being purchased. We need to know for whom items are being purchased, which vendors are we using, which procurement methods are we using to buy those goods and services, and are we maximizing the economy based on our efforts? All of these questions reach across the entire enterprise. And, and to order, in order to answer these questions, um, it requires having a skill set onboard, uh, someone to identify, capture, uh, track data, and to, uh, make recommendations to me as a director on the business, uh, decisions behind, uh, that data. Uh, right now, um, there is no position in the purchasing, uh, department, uh, with, uh, with this type of skill set. So, uh, we'll be asking for, uh, a business manager position. Most of my colleagues throughout the county have business manager positions. We have not had one, I don't think ever. And I think it's time that we have one because, as I say, you know, we, it, procurement is now a new strategic role, and a lot of what we do is driven by data. And data regarding vendors, our spin, how is our spin categorized or allocated across the enterprise, cost savings. We track, we track cost savings, we track cost avoidance, we track revenue, whether the revenue is from the sale of surplus assets or whether it's from, um, the rebates we get back from cooperative procurements. And so, um, I think that to have a new business manager position is, uh, very important. And so I think that having a business manager position is very important, and I'll talk about that a little later in, in the personnel cost budget. About six months ago, we launched an 18-month procurement modernization initiative, and that initiative is designed to modernize and improve the procurement process, how we do business. And we, within that modernization initiative, there are about 15 to 16 action items. For the sake of brevity, I only included a few. Some of these we've started, some that we will be implementing pretty soon, and I just want to provide it to you as a highlight. I will say the e-procurement system is going to really modernize our function. We are moving down the path right now of implementing a new e-procurement or acquiring a new e-procurement system that's going to help us manage, better manage our data and drive our daily decision makings around data. I've talked to you, each of you individually regarding the purchase card program, and our goal is to launch a purchasing card program in January. Of course, this item will be on the agenda in December, and I appreciate your support for that program. And I will also point out P-101 seminar, which we're looking to launch in early next year, and that's a seminar for, you know, all of our departments to provide a foundational basis for an understanding of the procurement process, and, and it's designed just to help them better engage the procurement process, to help them better understand the procurement process. Because most of the challenges when it comes to procurement and use of departments, nine times out of 10, if there's a problem, it's because the, the procurement process is not properly communicated. So we're developing that seminar to help there, and I will say, there's another one, Procurement Liaisons Group, Implement Procurement Liaisons, that group, I see it, and that's a group where, that we started a few months back, where that group comprises a number of individuals from all of the departments that are, that are engaged in the procurement process, and so we've created a venue for that group, and we meet with that group every quarter just to bring them up to speed on procurement issues, to new initiatives that are underway, and to provide them with training as well. So that's been a really, that's been very beneficial to us so far. So these are some of the highlights that are in that 18-month procurement modernization As far as my, as far as the, the overall budget, as I said, when I started my presentation, that my numbers would be much smaller than what you've seen. So the ask in FY '23 is, is the $209,000. And that's not 2.9 million, that's $209,000. And that largely comprises two positions that I'll, I'll be asking for. One I already talked about, the business manager position, and a second position I'll talk about in the next slide. The personnel budget, two positions, the business manager, and the second one is the purchasing card administrator. As I, you know, explained to you when I met with you individually regarding the purchase card program, you know, based on our spend as a county, based on the, the amount of money that we anticipate that will be managed under the purchase card program, probably about $12 million a year because it corresponds to what we're spending right now with our field purchase orders, and that's about $12 million a year. When you look at that type of spend, and the other comparable organizations out there, they all have a full-time purchasing card administrator. So the ask for the personnel budget is the purchasing card administrator and the business manager. By the way, you might be asking, well, where's your, who's your business manager? I, I'm the director and I'm the business manager as well, so I just want to let you know that. Here's the organizational chart, and this is where these, the two positions rest. The purchasing card administrator is going to report to the deputy director, and you'll see accountant two there. We put accountant two because there is no P-card administrator role in the county right now, so the best position that corresponds to that is in accountant two, and we think that position is commensurate, commensurate to the, 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 the skill set based on what we'll need from the P-card administrator. And the business manager position is on the right side, it reports directly to me. These are, this are justifications I've talked about why we need a business manager in accountant two already, this is some of the detail. The operating budget, that's an increase of $15,800, not 1.5 million, but $15,800. And that is to, those are operating dollars to provide support for the two personnel in terms of computer supplies, general office supplies, that type of thing. And some of the details in the operating budget. That's the summary slide again. That kind of recaps everything. And by the way, I'm not asking for any capital money in my budget, it's zero, just personnel and operating. And this is my last slide. I thought about this slide long and hard, and I think it, it provides an excellent depiction of where we are right now in Cobb County in, in terms of our purchasing department. Right now, we're a pretty good department. We buy goods and services very well. I think we do a lot of the right things, but I think we are very, still very transactional in how we do our business, and so we want to get to that target state, which is a new strategic role where we make decisions that are driven based on data, and again, that business manager position will help us largely with that. And the accountant two, that's the purchasing card administrator, and I think the county is probably, and I've, you know, I've been in this business for three decades, and I've managed several purcha, I've managed several purchasing card programs, and I think Cobb County is probably one of the few counties I've ever seen without a purchase card program. And I think it's, I think it's time that we move down that journey, especially when you consider the fact that we are, you know, we want to move to that target state where we're more strategic in what we do. And I think the business manager and accountant two position, they're selling a loan there to close that gap, and I think these two positions will make a huge difference and will help us complete that journey. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Roger, for your presentation. Commissioners, do you have, yes, Commissioner Burrow?
Roger, thank you. For the past year, during COVID, we've had virtual how-to-do-business with Cobb, and Stephanie in DOT has been conducting those every month with the different departments. So do you think, starting in January, we can get back to the in-person how-to-do-business?
I would like to. I'm sorry, I would like to, but a lot of that, I guess it depends on the trajectory of the virus and where we are with that, and that's one of the reasons why we're doing it, you know, virtually right now. But the plan, yes, is to do that again, and in fact, we have just invested in a, it's one of these vendor, vendor exhibit booths that we have now for the purchasing department. We haven't had one, so, so we intend to get out to do, to do them in, in, face-to-face, but we also want to participate in, in the vendor expos, where we go out and the, they're called reverse trade shows, where the vendors, you know, we will set up a booth with other jurisdictions, and they will come to us and, and, and get some pointers on how to do business with Cobb County. So we have a nice booth that we've just purchased to do that. We're very proud of that, and it has the Cobb County logo and everything on it, it's procurement, purchasing department. So yes, to answer your question, that's very important, and we're, you know, it's one of the conversations that Stephanie and I have been having is that, when, you know, when can we get back out there? So hopefully it's January.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other commissioner?
I have a question regarding the historically underrepresented, underrepresented businesses and local vendor outreach program. I appreciate your efforts this year in, at least having meetings and communicating with diverse businesses here in the county. I know I've talked to you about this when you first came in, and I think you were still drinking from that fire hose, as was I, but one of the ways that we can be strategic about that is through a disparity study to see what is the representation of diverse businesses in the county and to see if those numbers are reflected in how we do business with other parties. Is that included in your presentation or in any of your numbers? Because I know that's, that's a significant expenditure.
Right. The disparity study is not included in there. What we've included in that initiative are efforts to beef up our outreach to those historically underutilized business enterprises. And we have made contact with several organizations out there that specialize in developing partnerships with, call them hub firms, historically underutilized business enterprises, and one is the National Minority Development, National Minority Supplier Development Council, and there are another organizations that we've, that we've reached out to, to try to partner with them so that we could determine, you know, what can we do in Cobb County to cast a net farther and wider, okay, to bring in more vendors, okay? Not just the vendors that we typically bring in, and the vendors we bring in are really good, but, you know, how can we reach those vendors that have been historically excluded from having equal access to business opportunities? So the initiative includes, it's mostly, it beefs up the outreach to these, to these organizations. But a disparity study would be helpful. I mean, the disparity study could show us, certainly it could be more pointed in terms of, you know, what are the specific numbers out there in the community in terms of minority suppliers, okay? And then, you know, if the county wants to set goals later on, then that's possible. But I certainly, I certainly wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest setting any goals without doing that disparity study.
Exactly.
Which is the best practice.
Exactly. Equity is certainly a goal, and as we're seeing reflected in so many initiatives, not just locally, but even with the president's initiatives, with the dollars that he's provided local governments, that's a tenant in a lot of the programs. It would be very helpful if we had some type of assessment to give us metrics that we can use as a target, and I don't see how we get to that without having that study completed.
That would be very helpful. But in advance of that, I would say that there's still a number of things that we can do pretty progressively in the county to ensure that we are reaching out to those historically underrepresented businesses, such as increasing awareness, such as, you know, the local, the virtual seminars that we have right now for local businesses, we can expand that to those historically underutilized business enterprises as well, and that's one of the reasons why we reached out to the National Minority Supplier Development Council and say, hey, who are those firms in Cobb County? We can now invite those to, we already have a venue for doing that, so why don't we invite those suppliers as well? That's a very progressive way of, of actually creating that awareness. And I will say as well that we have recently hired a consultant to come in and, actually, she's going to start this process in January. She's going to put a training program together for our procurement liaisons group to help them, help them better source historically underutilized business enterprises. Because it's not, you know, the situation I've found out with minority suppliers, it's not that, you know, folks, you know, I mean, it's not that they don't want minority suppliers, it's just that they don't, they, a lot of times, people just don't know where they are, you know, and so, you know, the education is focused on, you know, finding where are those, where are those firms, okay? And how can we reach them? And how can we cast a net farther and wider? And in the non-conventional places where we typically just cast a net to get the same suppliers that we have right now. So I think that that's, that type of awareness, that type of work can go a long way as well in advance of, in advance of a future disparity study.
Okay, thank you. I certainly would like to see one incorporated in this next year's budget because it will be two years in without seeing that, and again, without having identification of what those metrics are, then casting a net wide is one thing, but ensuring that what is caught is reflective of the opportunity is something different, and I'd like for us to be more directed about that.
Well noted.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, I will now turn the, over to my good colleague, the tax assessor, Stephen
And then it was time for the tax assessor. Well, good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager.
Good afternoon. It's still good, and it's still afternoon.
I promised Mr. Geese that I would go through these 62 slides expeditiously so that we could all be home.
Less than 30 seconds.
In less than 30 seconds. I appreciate the opportunity of being here this afternoon and presenting to you our budget presentation. Everyone knows what we do. We value property for the county for taxation purposes. We are also required to keep a tax map of each and every parcel, and that's all outlined for us by law. The Georgia Department of Revenue provides like a liaison to us, if you will, serving to help us with the code section. Much of what we do in our office is guided by Georgia law, and so they provide assistance with that. What challenges do we face? Interestingly, well, all of our appraisers are required to have 40 hours of continuing education every two years. That's prescribed by law, but the pandemic has caused an issue in terms of having classes, and so the Department of Revenue and other educational organizations are, are giving few and fewer classes because they, they're running into having problems finding space because of the pandemic to have people in a classroom setting. So fewer classes means a little bit more travel, and also, they have provided a online program, but guess what? It's more expensive than the face-to-face class. So we have an increased need in regards to our educational fund so that we can keep our, our appraisers and our assessors compliant with law. We also have an issue with staffing. I know that, that may come as a surprise. Since I came here in 2005 in a supervisory role, we have never had an issue finding people who want to be appraisers. This is the first time where we've had four vacancies, and we've had it for about a year now. We've just left it open, continue to get applications. So that is a challenge that we are facing. As Mr. Barfield mentioned earlier, it does put pressure on others in the organization, and it, it does take its toll in the long run on everyone because there's a shift in work, right? Everybody has to chip in and make sure that the job gets done. So finding good quality candidates has become a challenge for our office, just as it has for everyone else. Here is an overview of our budget. You can see that our request for 2023 is $273,000. Most of our operating budget is contract money. The vast majority of our operating budget is contract money. The rest of it is used to keep the office moving as well as our educational fund that I mentioned earlier. So $2.8 million is the operating fund, that probably 80% of that is in contract money. So the $273,000, where does that come from? Well, let's talk a little bit about our personnel budget first. As you'll notice there, the line that represents the parcel count goes from 240-some-thousand parcels on up to where we're at today, 260-some-thousand parcels in the county. How did we get that way? By the initial picture that we had. We had a new subdivision with a road, about a dozen houses. That used to be two parcels, now it's 12. Now our folks have to value those homes on a regular basis, and as the county continues to grow, whether it's commercial or residential, we have to value those new structures and new parcels each and every year and make sure that our value is representative of the fair market value. So that has changed over the course of time. We've got more parcels, we're up to 260-some-thousand parcels, but our, our staff level has remained the same. We're getting it done, we're, we're finding ways to use technology, and we have a contractor that takes care of all of our commercial properties. That's been very beneficial for our organization. Here is our org chart. We have four main divisions. Obviously, residential is our biggest division. We have about 53 employees total on our roster. Most of those work in residential. We have a personal property division that appraises business assets. division that appraises business assets as required by law. So, businesses are required to report their assets for taxation purposes in Cobb County, in the state of Georgia. And so they oversee that process. We have a commercial division, as I mentioned, that is privatized out, that is all contractor. They are in amongst all of our employees out at the assessor's office. They work right with us. And we have found that program to be very, very beneficial. We also have a mapping division. As I mentioned, we are required by law to keep a tax map of the entire county, shows where all the parcel lines for each and every parcel in the county. So, the $273,000 that we're asking for in the increase to the operating budget, what does that make up? Well, we have already come before the Board of Commissioners for some increased contract funds which go into place for next year. So, the vast majority of the $254,000, the Board of Commissioners has already approved. The biggest change on here is the education lines, which is travel, training, and registration fees so that we can get our folks educated by law, the 40 hours, and we can maintain a current status. That's extremely important. And that's, that's outside of the contract additions that we have. That is the vast majority of the $273,000. So, you have already approved that, and we thank you very much for that. So, this is just a summary slide of what we just presented and where we're at with what our needs are. But I want to thank the Board of Commissioners very much for all, all of your support. On behalf of the Board of Assessors and our management team, it would be very, very difficult for us to do our job if we didn't have the relationship that we have with the five of you. We greatly appreciate that. We're a unique department. We appreciate Sharon Stanley and her support that she provides to us. We thank everything that the county provides. And so with that, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Just one. So, for the four vacancies, noting that this is an anomaly, what is the primary driver of that? Is it like that there are no applicants? Because I know it says no qualified candidates, but what's the primary driver? Is it pay? Is it?
When you say primary driver, Commissioner, do you mean what is the primary driver for why we can't find qualified?
Right.
Yeah, it's the pay. We've had a number of employees that have left for other counties. We've had some of that. We've had some retiring. We have had some that have just found other opportunities. As the entry-level position for the appraiser, we're competing with other entry-level jobs in that arena, and so, in the real estate arena. And I think that that, that would be the biggest driver. We provide some benefits that people appreciate, as we all know, you know, insurance and stable paycheck and things like that. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we have lost on the money side with them.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Are we saving money with the contractors?
We are.
Because we're not paying benefits and?
Correct.
Full-time?
We are saving. And commercial appraisers, it's a different skill set to appraise a big office building as opposed to a subdivision of similar homes. It's a different skill set altogether. And so, to go out and find individuals who can do that to the quality of what we are getting here at Cobb County, and we've had them in place since 1999. They've been doing that task for us. And they do a fantastic job. And so, we really appreciate. If we, we have looked before, if we were to go out and try and hire these folks, what salary would we have to bring them in at? And we are saving money. We are.
Okay. And I believe it was Monday of this week, Monday or Tuesday, one of the contractors was at my house in my neighborhood.
Very good.
And I got the letter the same day that they were coming, and they were there. So, they're doing their job.
Very good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Steve, thank you so much for your presentation today.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Stanley.
So, I know we've been a lot. We're a large, large agency. If you give me about five more minutes of your time, I'd like to finish up on the Support Services 2324 budget request by presenting a proposed budget for forming a new real property division who would be responsible for matters related to transactions and management of the county's real property interest. Cobb County owns about 1.2,000 pieces of real property and parcels of land. That's a lot. Sell of these properties identified as surplus have resulted in over $6.6 million of revenue since 2017. Additionally, the county has expanded, has expanded over $114 million on real property and land in the same time period. An additional $3.3 million per year is realized from leasing of county-owned properties. That includes the airport and cell tower leases. And then you can see from these numbers that real property transactions result in significant revenue and expense for our county. You also see some of our challenges on this slide, including that there is currently no central oversight of sales, purchasing, and leasing of real property for the county. Transaction and management are spread out across multiple departments and agencies. We feel, and this gets to the opportunity on this slide, we, and this has been discussed with the county manager and myself, who does a lot of this right now, we feel there's an opportunity here and that establishment of a real property management division responsible for oversight and management of leases, land and facility acquisitions and sales, and inventory of Cobb-owned properties would ensure an accurate inventory of county properties, reduce the risk of missed revenue, and provide increased accountability and transparency. This is a budget that we put together, and then if you can look at this, we would ask for FY '23 to establish the division, and there would be a, for a total of $261,789. This is the personnel request. Our proposal is to open the division with a staff of two, a real estate division director and a GIS analyst. On this slide, you see the comparison numbers for Fulton and Gwinnett, who already have real property or land management divisions, similar to the other large counties in the area. This is, this is where, where those are. That's necessarily where the, the division would fall finally, but this is where we're proposing right now. This is the cost of those individuals. You'll see it'd be a GIS analyst and a division director. And that, that would not be a department director, but a division director position. Operating costs, we're proposing an operating budget of $30,000 annually with $4,690 in year one to cover the setup costs for the employees. Just on this, most of those expenses, if you go to that, are expenses that may be reimbursable as we sell properties. Some of those have to do with appraisals. They have to do with surveys, we have to do, those type things. There is a capital request on this for one vehicle for that department in the first year. So, just kind of in summary on that, this new real estate division that we'd like to establish, you see the total here on that slide of the, and as I said, this is the summary slide for that. So, any questions about that new real estate division that we'd like to establish? Yes, ma'am?
This is going to be pretty integral to a lot of the discussion today, because if you don't know what we have?
No, ma'am. I didn't go in detail over the challenges slide, but we have no single, you know, because you've asked me, and I haven't been able to provide you one, no single location database that handles, that covers all of our property, no single agency. And I don't, I don't propose in this that we pull involvement from the departments that are selling, like parks and all of that, but we need some overall management. And when I say oversight, at least tracking and involvement in, from one oversight agency or oversight division, we feel. We think it would pay for itself, I'll be honest with you. There are leases out there that, you know, we need, we do track down, and they haven't, you know, it's not that they haven't been paid, we just haven't had, you know, known to go after them or the individuals and those kind of things. So, I think this division would pay for itself. That's my opinion.
I mean, but is two enough?
It's a start.
It's a start.
It's a start.
I think about the legal implications of all the property we own.
Yes, ma'am. And I'll have to say, I want to do a shout out, you know, to Pat in the county attorney's office, because right now, this is me and him. And it's in our, my spare time and his, on his other thousands of things he does. So.
Maybe there's a plus-up for Pat's office, Bill, that can be considered. Share that with him.
Sharon get her own attorney, huh?
Oh, you can get your own attorney. Ah.
No, no, I like using them. I really do like using them. Thank you very much. But no, I don't want to get in the attorney business with that. But that is, I want to do a little bit of a summary of everything, but that is the last new thing I have to present. I do have one other item.
You have another question for you before you go on?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Where would they be housed if you get these two new positions?
In this building somewhere. Probably, probably, we have, we have options. We've considered, you know, I've discussed it with Jackie. We, of course, would discuss it, you know, as with the attorney's office and us. Right now, we would probably establish them, potentially. There's lots of opportunities on where they could fall in the Support Services Agency, or potentially even at the, under the county manager level. So, there are lots of options there. This is in '23. We'll discuss it as we go forward. Like I said, right now, most of this, I, we do try, I have to do a shout out for Calandra. And I say it's myself and Bill, but it is myself, Bill and Calandra. She spends at least half of her time tracking down property questions that come to the county from citizens.
Thank you, Calandra.
So, she is amazing at that.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Would the expansion include the purchase of a database system to house the information?
We have a system where we can house this in GIS. In addition, we, Kimberly and them are implementing indoors, which is our new portion, you know, our new system of record for facilities, which you can also put property in as well. So, we have a system. It's just no one is there really to pull it all. And it's, it's spread out. It truly is, as I said, spread out across the county.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Yeah. Commissioner Ro, did you have one other? I thought I saw you know. Okay.
If I did, I forgot what.
Okay. So, that brings us to the end of ours. I'd like to just really quickly do a shout out. You know how I feel about my department heads. I mean, I know everyone feels the same, but I think I have some of the best department heads in the county. I just want to commend all of them. Their presentations show you how focused they are on enabling other departments and elected offices in this county to do their business. That's kind of how we, we've set our goals and our missions, is to be there as an enabler and a catalyst and to help. And that's, that's what we aim at. And they reflect that every day. I've already mentioned Calandra, but I have to mention her for this presentation as well. We would never have gotten this pulled together, you know, without her on that. I want to thank Bill and the Finance Department. They have been so helpful also as we've gone through this new process of getting everything into Open Gov and everything at the same time. I do, do want to just double check that what I captured as action items for us to add to this is two things. One of them is to get you a full price, a price for a full facility condition assessment. Just so you know, we didn't really talk about it. We intend to include an ADA assessment in that as well. That would be, you know, we'll get the full price, and then we'll go from there and see how we phase that in. The other thing I captured, Chairwoman, was the disparity study that we want to add into the budget for the '2324 request with that. So, just to summarize, don't gong me, just to summarize on that, the Support Services Agency, we're proposing 51 new positions and conversion of four part-time to full-time positions. And then we're proposing an increase of $23.88 million across the five departments and agencies, and that includes the real estate, new real estate division. I did have one other thing we were going to go over today, but I'm going to walk the halls with you. Guys, on that, it's not a general fund, but it is something that we are responsible for, and that's the parking deck operating expenses. I'll just hit each of you individually. It's a very small presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Appreciate that. You cut down about 20 minutes by doing that. So, thank you for that. This was a very robust presentation, and so much of, at least what our citizens deal with, have been to deal with other departments that maybe more customer-facing. But certainly what we've seen today is, in a sense, part of the heartbeat of what allows all those other agencies to operate. And I know this took a lot of time, but it was certainly well worth it for us to have some better understanding of what you already do and then where the needs are. So, thank you.
Thank you guys for your time. We really do appreciate it.
All right. Have a great afternoon. We have one more budget presentation, Commissioners. You can let me know if you'd like a break before we get started with public health. Good. All right.
What happened to the parking deck?
She's going to meet with us.
Oh.
It's okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I must be the one standing between you and your families or the next meeting, one of the two.
It will be the latter.
We will do our best to be brief. If you would like to stand up while we're presenting, you're welcome to do that.
In the name of public health, I am going to stretch.
Yeah, in the name of your health and well-being, I'm happy to have you stand up and stretch a little bit.
Thank you for your patience.
Absolutely. So, first of all, thank you very much for your past support over the decades, but particularly during the pandemic. Your support through the general fund, through the CARES Fund, all of the staff time that your folks contributed to helping us fight the pandemic is tremendously appreciated. We certainly couldn't do it without you on a pre-pandemic stage, but also absolutely this last couple of years. We were asked to kind of highlight the mission. So, again, this is our public health mission with our partners to promote and protect the health and safety of residents in Cobb and Douglas County. Recall that even though our agency is responsible for both counties, the funding, the governance, and many grants are separated between Cobb and Douglas. And so, for today's conversation, it'll just be for Cobb. And we will also not be addressing the COVID ARPA money request that's separate from this. So, today is just a general fund request. Valerie Prince, our CFO, is here with me. Will be sharing the presentation. I'm so sorry. Dr. Memark and Wyman Pilcher, one of our board members, were here earlier, but they couldn't stay. They had another commitment and had to leave. But they did say that if you have any follow-up questions, particularly for them, they're happy to answer those with you. So, for our accomplishments this past year, you know, the COVID pandemic response 24/7, we've talked with you more than monthly about our work there, so I'm not going to spend any time on that. I do want to say that while we were responding to the pandemic, we were also maintaining all of our traditional public health services. So, across the nation, when many public health departments would close their traditional services in order to deploy their staff to the pandemic, Cobb and Douglas Public Health continued all of our services. And our staff transitioned either to providing those virtually, digitally, in drive-through settings, or in person. So, for example, our WIC services continued as robustly as they always have for pregnant women and young children to make sure that they had food vouchers. We did that in drive-through settings, and our nutritionists met with the clients virtually. And we even added in a lot of grants for produce, what they were able to give out to those families in addition to their WIC services. Our clinical staff continued to provide in clinic services. So, all of the STDs and immunizations and pap smears, all of that continued, of course, in person, just with a higher level of protection for the staff. They always showed up. So, again, none of that changed this last few years. We worked really hard to identify and to begin to address the health disparities in the community. And so, many of you were on our bi-weekly meetings where we addressed the disparities related to COVID and tried to target our services, particularly to reach our vulnerable communities. We did that as well this past year with our Healthy Start Program for our babies born healthy, to address maternal and infant mortality, with our HIV program for HIV testing, and many other services. So, it's our expectation that we would continue to do that in the future, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Our successful Fab accreditation, you know that we've mentioned that to you in the past. We're really proud of that because I can tell you that across the nation, state and local health agencies deferred that, and they let that accreditation lapse because of their work in the pandemic. We felt like we could not do that. So, the staff rallied, and we, it's an arduous process, but we felt like that was important to demonstrate and hold ourselves accountable to the residents for a level of excellence. And so, we achieved that. We were the first health department in 2015 in Georgia to become accredited. We were the first in Georgia to become re-accredited, and we are among the top 10% in the nation for that performance. I will say, in addition to that Fab accreditation, our staff have received both individually and collectively national and local recognition for received both individually and collectively, national and local recognition for the work that we've done the past year or so, or two years during the pandemic, in our efforts to adjust and meet the needs of the community during the pandemic, and also our response. So I'm really proud of that and proud of how the staff just stepped up in a number of ways. Our administration area, our finance area, is one of those. I think we've told you that they've received the Government Finance Officers Association awards for budgeting and transparency in their finances. And, and that's something that I think our residents should really be proud about. You may remember that pre-pandemic, we were awarded a $5 million HERSA grant to address maternal and infant mortality. We were in the first year of that when the pandemic hit, and it would have been easy for us to say, we're so sorry, could we just give you this back for now? And we didn't. And our staff has worked really hard to continue to wrap our arms around our families in need to reduce maternal and infant mortality. We're in great standing with HERSA, and because of that, I expect that they will renew this after the first five years. And that's a huge thing for Cobb County to be able to have that continue to address maternal and infant mortality. And then you've heard over and over again about some of the food insecurity efforts. We linked arms with a number of partners in the community, and were able to pull in some new grants into the county to address food insecurity issues. When we look at the challenges in the future, one is the continued pandemic response. We're not done yet. I am pleased to be standing up here in front of you without a mask on for one of the first times in the last couple of years. But we're not out of the woods yet. We're still at about the 150s in our case rates, and so we're watching that very closely and continuing to provide testing and immunizations. We are having the same challenges that many of the other leadership mentioned about the staffing and infrastructure to meet future service needs. We know from past experience that as the economy is challenged, more people demand public health services. And they look to us to fill those needs. And so we expect that to continue for a few years, at least, after the pandemic resolves. We also know that there are many health issues that have been exacerbated by the pandemic, not related to the virus itself. So many people who have not sought care, healthcare, many folks who have had issues with additional chronic diseases, with opioid issues, other mental health issues, are going to be then queuing up in line and needing services in the future. As I mentioned, we will be expanding our efforts to reduce the health disparities and reaching more of our vulnerable communities. We thank you for that CDBG mobile health van, and just expect to continue to put that to work after the pandemic to be able to do more robust services out in the community like flu shots and immunizations and HIV tests and other services. The addition of the South Cobb Public Health Center is exciting to me. I've been talking about that with Chairwoman Cupid for, gosh, it seems like eight years now that we've been talking about trying to do something more robust in that part of the county. You know, a few years ago, we expanded in our Smyrna location, and we've added services there. We expanded up in the Acworth-Kennesaw area, and we expanded services there. But it's really time for us to do something in the south part of the county and to meet those needs. And then lastly, I would say that, you know, with reaching the Fab accreditation means that we can't rest on our laurels. We're going to have to continue to meet those high standards and demonstrate that over the next few years. Cobb and Douglas Public Health is responsible every five years for doing a very thorough community health needs assessment. This looks at what are the health outcome issues that we're facing right now in the county, but also doing focus groups with our residents and hearing what their priorities and needs are, and doing key informant interviews with community leaders so that we hear what the priorities are with you and with others in the community for public health services. We're at the tail end of that assessment. We expect to be wrapping it up in the next couple of months. But some preliminary findings that you can see here in front of you, one of those is that our residents are saying they're still having challenges with access to health services, particularly related to cancer, chronic diseases, mental health, substance abuse. We see as a result of the pandemic, some increased food insecurity, more insurance loss than we had before, and reduced healthy living behaviors. You know, folks joke a little bit about the COVID-19, right, meaning that's the 19 pounds that you gained during the pandemic because we were all so more sedentary and not going out and about. It is real. I heard something the other day that the average amount of weight that folks have gained has been 29 pounds in the last two years. And so if you don't think that's going to contribute to chronic disease impact and outcomes in our community, I can tell you it will. So we've really, we've got to be prepared to address that. And then we're continuing to see unintentional injuries, chronic disease, maternal and infant mortality. Breast cancer has moved up a bit on the list, and substance abuse are continuing to impact our hospitalizations and our premature death rates. And so all of those things result in us having to be prepared and ramp up in many areas. I, I imagine you have seen the recent Atlanta Regional Commission, the Burris Institute study that was done, the Metro Atlanta Speaks. Among the Metro Atlanta area, public health concerns remain number two of the top priorities for 2021. When they carved out just Cobb County residents who responded to that survey, public health concerns were still number four, equal to transportation issues, and ahead of public education, taxes, and, and race relations. So public health needs are still a high priority for our residents, and Cobb and Douglas Public Health is positioned to be able to address those needs and those priorities related to access to care, infectious diseases, environmental health needs, and the opioid crisis. To give you one example, on the infectious disease front, not COVID-related, you may remember us telling you a couple of years ago that Cobb County is among the top 50 counties in the nation, top 50 counties in the nation for new HIV infections. We are not proud of that. And we've got it top for new HIV infections. And so between getting folks tested and getting them access to PrEP, the prevention medication for the preventing the transmission of HIV, we've got to do something about that. And we are part of a national project to eradicate HIV in 10 years. The clock didn't stop ticking with the pandemic, so now we've got about seven and a half years to eradicate HIV. And we've got the tools to do it, but we've got to be able to get out in the community and sell that and get folks to be tested and get them to participate in these prevention practices if we're going to get on top of that. I'm going to stop. I could go on, you know, for a while, but I'm going to let Valerie talk to you about the budget pieces, and we'll both answer your questions about any of that.
Good afternoon. So the county provides us a little over $1.2 million is what the allocation has been for FY '21 and '22. We spend, you know, all of our facilities are county facilities, Cobb County facilities. Cobb County maintains the major systems, the roofing, the HVAC, the plumbing, that sort of thing. We do our own janitorial pest control utilities and those types of things. So we spend approximately, last year was $685,000 on utilities, janitorial, pest control, security expenses, those types of things for our, just for our Cobb facility. So a little over half of that allocation went just to maintaining internally the facilities. We are requesting an additional $3.5 million, and really, it's on the personnel side. And it's because our pay structure is under the statewide pay scale, and we're, we average about 25% less than Cobb County's pay scale. So when you hear all these departments talk about their difficulties recruiting because of the pay scale, when you look at our pay scale, we're 25% behind the county. So for example, on the website yesterday, I looked, the county has a payroll specialist position posted. It's advertised with a starting pay of $41,600. Our starting pay for the equivalent position is $34,200. So just eight miles down the road, we're trying to compete with y'all on an equal position. That's about $7,000 less. And we have one payroll specialist who processes the whole payroll for our agency. So it's, it's really on our personnel side. We've got to do something to move our pay scale up. We don't have a funding mechanism to do that. The county Board of Commissioners is the taxing authority that can levy the tax to set to fund the Board of Health. We generate about 50% of our own revenue internally. That comes from fees for services. It comes from things like environmental health fees, vital records fees, our fees for service, private insurance, Medicaid, Medicare, those types of things. So we generate about 50% of our own revenue. So we try to be as self-sufficient as possible. The rest is state and federal money that comes down to us. And then the county provides, it equals to about 3% of our budget. And so we don't have a lot of flexibility, we have no flexibility on the state and federal funding, and we have very little on our, on our funding that we can do this. But we've got to do something to move because the same challenges that y'all are having are magnified for us because of our pay scale. So the way that breaks down that $3.5 million, it's about $500,000 for the new South Cobb Public Health Center. There are no clinical operations going on there. Now, at the existing facility, it would probably fit in about this part of the boardroom. But we're, our plan is to open clinical services down there with three RNs and three medical assistants, which is what we use at our other clinics. And then our health equity outreach team is approximately $500,000 a year. That's an outreach coordinator, five part-time RNs, and two admin support personnel to assist with those operations. The $2.3 million is the salary support to help bring our salaries in line, or closer. They're never be in line with, with everyone else, but a little bit closer to bring us up. And that would address compression and trying to shift our pay scale to where we can be somewhat competitive in the public sector. And then four positions in epidemiologists and environmental health with additional environmental health business follow-up. Environmental health through the pandemic has been overloaded with business follow-up, businesses calling about how to do additional cleaning and the requirements and things like that. They, they don't bill for those services. They bill for inspections of restaurants and tourist accommodations. But all additional administrative time doing business follow-up has taken a toll on them, as well as the acute epi team. Obviously, those are the ones who are doing the, the case investigations. And I'll give you an example of something. So during the pandemic, all the COVID cases, thousands and thousands of COVID cases, last year, we had over 1,000 animal bite cases that our epidemiologist has to follow up on each individual. And that's, you know, averages three per day on a 365-day calendar, and we have five epi's that handle all of that. Now, with COVID, we did get state funding and the cares money. We were able to bring on additional epi's and contact tracers. But just the acute epi reportable disease side is overwhelming for the staff. Are there any questions?
Boy, you just raised a number, you just raised a number of questions with that stat. Is that atypical for there to be 1,000 bites per year?
No, ma'am.
And how are these reported? Is it through Cobb Police, Animal Control?
Some of it's animal control, some of it's physicians' offices, you know, if people go to the hospital or go to their doctor's office, urgent care, or it's self-reported in, yeah, or through animal control. A lot of them are animal control. They call because they got bit by a stray animal or something like that, and then they call us, and then they do the follow-up on that to determine if they have to have rabies treatment. Lisa, you may need to jump in on this. I'm not a...
Well, no, I think you're doing great. It's, it's just the follow-up. You know, we have to work with the families. Once somebody gets bitten, we're the ones that work with the families to get them, the other family members into prophylactic treatment and to do the testing and all of that stuff and the follow-up to make sure that those folks are cared for and it doesn't get transmitted.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's just one example of the general public, not including myself, just not being aware of the breadth of services that you regularly provide for our citizens. Commissioner Burrell?
Valerie, on the $2.3 million for salary increases, that's for the existing employees?
Yes, ma'am.
And how many are in public health right now?
We have about 300, under the Cobb Board of Health, we have about 300, not including our temp staff that's through COVID. So it's about 300 full.
For the traditional full-time, part-time, permanent positions.
At all your locations?
Yes, ma'am.
In Cobb.
In Cobb.
In Cobb, not Douglas.
One of our biggest challenges is we have state benefits, and our benefit rate is 63%. So for every dollar of salary, it says 63 cents on the dollar. And we're...
And so that makes it difficult, right, for us to have to pay 63 cents on every dollar of salary, means that every time we raise someone's salary, it, it's a significant increase in our budget, right, that we have to pay to the state for that amount. And we don't have a choice there. That's, that's the benefits plan that we're on. And so that makes it difficult for us to raise our salaries because of the associated benefits cost.
Just to, not to pour salt in this wound, but, you know, as you're listening to our presentations, you're learning about the disparity of our salaries. We are undergoing a pay and classification study right now, which may lift up those salaries that you're comparing your salaries to even more.
Great. That's really good news.
But it may be helpful to coordinate the timing of this, with, with the data that we receive from there, because I'd hate for you to still be behind.
Yeah, I think the last salary survey that was done at the state was 2016. And one of the challenges is we're in a metro Atlanta area, right, with those salaries. But those salaries are based on the salary study that's done statewide. And so the salary for an environmentalist is the same in Cobb County as it might be in Waycross. And, and so, but it's a lot harder to...
On the scale.
On the scale. It's a lot harder to attract an environmentalist here compared to Waycross. And so it really puts us behind, and we're, we're feeling that. We've got 10% of our, our personnel right now are vacant. 10% of our positions, of those 300 positions, are vacant right now. And it's, means that all that work just gets shifted to other staff. And after two years of the pandemic, I can tell you that it's wear and thin on that.
Of course, especially you guys are on the front lines of this.
Right.
Regarding the health center in South Cobb, would you guys require a larger space to accommodate the six new positions?
Yes. Right now, I think the existing facility is...
2,500 square feet?
Yeah.
So, you know, it's 25...
It's shoebox.
And so we're looking at about 12,000 to 15,000 for the work. So similar to the size of the facility we opened up in Acworth-Kennesaw, that new facility that was opened up with SPOSS dollars a few years ago. We're looking at a similar to that, and then maybe some additional space, because what we're hoping to do is to partner up with an FQHC, a federally qualified health center, to be able to come jointly with us so that they can do the primary care services, and we can do the wraparound traditional public health services.
And maybe some additional space for other community groups that would complement the services that we provide in that area, because we know that there's issues down there with community services that people need.
We've had preliminary, and they're truly preliminary conversations still, with folks like an FQHC primary care physicians group with behavioral health or with mental health, with some of the community services that families need to help link them to different community services and to help with some funding sources. So, but it's all preliminary until all of those agencies know what are we asking them to bring to the table. But I'm excited about the opportunity, and I appreciate that you all put that on the SPOSS and that the residents approved it. And our board put some, aside some of our reserve monies to help build it. So then we just have to make sure we've got the operating money for it.
We've had a very successful partnership with the county in, over the past two SPOSS, and, you know, hopefully this next SPOSS of building and renovating our facilities. And we've put over $5 million of our own capital funds into those county buildings to complement the SPOSS funding that we received to build them out, to meet the needs of the community. And so we, you know, we, our board has pledged to do the same on the new facility as well.
Okay, thank you.
I lost my train of thought.
It's, you're hungry. It's late.
I'm good. Maybe I'll have her some time. Okay.
Thank you so much. Oh, you had...
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to point out, this is, you know, for public health, nurses are the backbone of the public health. They're built on a nursing, an expanded role nursing protocol. Our salary, average salary for a frontline nurse is 54, a little over $54,000. The statewide average is $69,000. So that's another, nurses are very hard to recruit, especially in the metro area with the number of healthcare facilities we have. And then again, the Board of Commissioners is the taxing authority that can set the budget to meet the needs of our local Board of Health. Really, what we're, our goal is to request one-tenth of one mil and have that kind of set aside for public health so that we have some long-term sustainable funding stream that we can do long-term planning on and know that that money's coming in and that over time we'll know what that money's going to be, and we can face our future on that.
Is there a benchmark for how other local governments are supporting public health?
The statewide average is 14% of the local Board of Health's budget. We're at 3. Douglas County, our other county within our district, they provide approximately 15% of the Douglas County budget. DeKalb County provides between $6 and $7 million for their local Board of Health. So...
And what is our total contribution?
$1.2 million.
Okay.
And we do have, related to this millage, we can pull together, there are some benchmarks around the country of other communities that have done the millage rate to provide long-term sustainability for public health. So if you're interested in that, we can certainly give you those links.
Yeah, I'd certainly like to confer with our finance to see how...
Sure.
...we can consider that.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your patience, for your time. Thank you for all that you have done, I mean, seen and unseen, with helping us with the COVID pandemic, helping us beyond the help that we've provided at times, because you're on the front lines irrespective of where the political winds are or even where the public's feelings are. You're there to help people and keep us healthy, and you've been doing that through some tremendous efforts. So thank you for that heroism, but also just thank you for maintaining all these other services in the meanwhile, with certainly opportunity for us to be better supportive financially.
And we'd be happy, if anyone needs to reach out outside of this, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I do have a request that the Commissioners be provided the slides electronically so we can refer back. Thank you, Ross.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I believe this concludes our work session for today. We will be convening tonight at 7:00 PM for our Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Hope that you can join us. Thanks.